All right. We'll call this Committee of the Whole Meeting to order in City Hall Council Chambers, 389 Spruce Street, second floor of Morgantown, West Virginia, Tuesday, September 30th at 7:00 PM. This meeting is also being broadcast live on YouTube, on the Morgantown City Morgantown's YouTube channel. This is a Committee of the Whole Meeting. These meetings are intended to provide an opportunity for council to receive information, ask questions, and identify policy options in an informal setting. We're not taking any official action in these meetings, or tonight. At the, this Committee of the Whole Meeting, the following items are scheduled. And first, we have presentations. And our first one will be a Latino Heritage Month proclamation. Any current in New York if you'd like to?
It'll be Lola Contreras.
And Lola Contreras.
Yeah.
So whereas, Latino Heritage Month, celebrated from September 15th to October 15th, honors the history and culture of the Hispanic and Latino peoples.
Recognizing their significance, significant contributions to the United States, and whereas the Latino presence in the present day of the United States spans centuries, predating Spanish colonization of the Americas, and has been an integral part of shaping our nation. And whereas Hispanic and Latino are the most commonly used terms to describe Americans with Latin American and Caribbean ancestry, often used interchangeably, but the term Hispanic only denotes a connection to Spain or the Spanish language. And whereas the most inclusive term, Latino, has been described, or best described as the diverse residents of the US of cultural or ancestral ties to Latin America and the Caribbean, and acknowledges Latino, Black, Indigenous, Asian, and other heritages on equal terms with European ancestry. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month began as a week-long celebration in 1968 under President Johnson, and was expanded to a month by President Reagan in 1988. And whereas, the 2024 update from the US Census Bureau indicates that over 68 million Latinos and Latinas currently reside in the United States, comprising over 20% of the population, making them the largest growing ethnic group in the US. And whereas approximately 5% of Morgantown's population identifies as Hispanic slash Latino. And whereas Morgantown proudly celebrates its diverse community, including its Latino members, and strives for equality and justice for all. And whereas Latino Heritage Month offers an opportunity to explore the contributions of Latinos and Latinas to Morgantown as they continue to make a significant impact on the city's culture and community. Now therefore, on this 30th day of September 2025, I, Mayor Daniel Trumbull, on behalf of the City Council, Human Rights Commission, and Sister Cities Commission, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Latino Heritage Month in Morgantown, West Virginia, and encourage everyone to celebrate the worth and contributions of our Latino and Latino community members.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, three. Thank you so much.
And four?
Maybe we could have Senora Contreras tell us about what's coming up with the Hispanic Heritage Month and the Latino community.
We were specifically trying not to have a presentation afterwards because of the Committee of the Whole. But do you want to say something?
I mean, she won't be here next week.
Do you want to say something real quick?
Hmm? No, because it's hers. Like, it's her one.
We could all...
Could we?
Ms. Contreras, could you tell us about, you want to go ahead and say it?
Did you want to speak on the Hispanic Heritage Month and some of the things that you're doing, particularly?
From here.
Huh?
From here.
Right there. If you don't want to.
You don't have to.
You don't have to. But you came all the way down here, and it is important to recognize...
First of all, thank you for Sister Series, because this is something, this is going to be the second year that we're going to do the event, it's going to be next year. We did one, when was that?
Last year, I believe.
It was not last year, it was your list with us. So, our plan is to do again, another one, but with all the, with WBU, and with high schools, and whole of town. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gracias.
All right, we are on to item B, fiscal year 25, Police Pension Annual Financial Report Presentation.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. John Ferguson, Finance Director, will be presenting on this item, as well as the next item, which is an annual report. Both our police pension will go first, and then we will do our fire pension. These are required presentations that we need to make in order to draw down funds. So we want to make sure that we're meeting that commitment under the state statute. So we'll turn it over to Mr. Ferguson for a brief presentation on each item.
Thank you. John Ferguson, Finance Director, it's a privilege to be here tonight, especially with good news, best time of the night, I tell you. The first report we have is the annual report on the Policeman's Pension and Relief Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. Now, the police pension fund itself had a lot going on this fiscal year, a lot, and I'm going to get right into the, it's not really a financial highlight, but it will eventually be, it's a huge highlight, for the pension. On January 7th, 2025, City Council approved the closing of the police and fire pension funds to new entrants, not closing the fund, but to new entrants, effective July 1st, 2025, and choosing the optional two method to finance the unfunded, actuarially accrued liability of the existing pension plans. This decision was aimed at establishing a financial responsible and sustainable strategy to manage the police pension fund's significant unfunded liability over a 38-year period with no change in benefits to current plan participants. Now, remember, the reason why we did this is because our unfunded liability at the beginning of the year, and I did bring it with me, just so that, just as a reminder, was... Hold on, there we go. Our unfunded liability was, opened to begin with, 21.25%. That was our funded liability, which means we were unfunded 78%. That's why we took the move, that's why it was what it was. Now, the source, or the securing of the plan participants, their benefits, that was the number one concern that we had. Our number two concern was making sure that the city could finance it, could afford it. And that, with this new, what we called the Compromise Plan, did exactly that. We now have a plan moving forward over a 38-year period to fully fund this plan, going from a 20-some percent funded, funded status to 100% funded status. Now, no one has a crystal ball, no one can guarantee that, yes, you are going to get these rates, you're going to get these returns, but we have a plan, and it's a good plan, better than having no plan. So if you're looking at page three, the very first thing here that I want to point out, when you take a look at the total pension assets, the increase from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025, you can see that the investment account, that John Hancock investment account grew $7.5 million over that one-year period. That was great, okay? How they did it, so if we get into the middle of the page, total contributions, first off, employee contributions represented $464,000. The city's required contributions that were on the previous funding method, that alternative funding method of 107% of last year's contributions, was $1.494 million. The bulk of that increase that we saw in the investment account is from the additional city employer contributions of $5.7 million. Now, that represents, first off, $5 million from the retirement fund. Those were funds which were set aside from the municipal sales tax, which were sitting in that retirement fund, and as soon as January 8th rolled around, those were deposited into both the police...
Those actually work now, be careful.
I see that. They were deposited into both the police and the fire pension funds, respectively. The second one here is on February 4th, we deposited $3,000, which represented the amount of the remaining interest that was earned on that account. Then, over the two remaining quarters, on January 30th, we have the first deposit of their allocation of municipal sales tax. And then on April 24th, 2025, they also received their allocation of municipal sales tax, which was $320,000. So overall, the city deposited an additional employer contribution of $5.7 million. That represents the bulk of that increase in their investment account from the beginning of the year to the end of the fiscal year. Does that make sense? Okay. Excuse me. Now, the fund also received $839,900 in the West Virginia surcharge tax state aid. Okay. That was received in fiscal year 2025, deposited into their investment account. So total overall contributions into the plan, actually, I don't have it in there, but total contributions into the plan represented almost $7 million. Now, if we get into the investment earnings, you can see, and I have it highlighted and read there, total net investment income overall for the entire plan was $2,190,000. That's how much that the investments returned after the investment advisor fees, which was very, very good. So $2.1 million. Total benefit payments to retirees, disability recipients, and survivor benefits were $3.2 million. Total return of contributions to former employees that left before being fully vested were only $13,600. Total administrative expenses were not a lot, they totaled $452 for traveler's insurance, payroll processing fees of $6,600 for their current year fees, they also had some prior year fees of $4,100 that they paid this year. They also had third-party processing vendor fees of $5,987, and they also had an invoice for Bolton Actuaries, which was for their additional pension studies. They asked for additional pension studies, which actually led to our Compromise Plan, and that was their $4,192. Total investment performance, overall return, they received 9.49%. A lot of people might look at that and say, you know what, the S&amp;P 500 over that exact same period was 13.3. But keep in mind that the MPOB, the Municipal Pension Oversight Board, dictates how much they can invest into what, so they can't invest 100% into equities. They have certain limits on how much that they can, there's so much that's in equity, so much that's in international, so much that's in fixed income. Overall, though, they did receive nine, or did earn 9.49%, which I believe is a very respectable rate of return. And in conclusion, they are maintaining their overall financial integrity of the fund, ensuring that they continue to provide provisions for the benefits to our dedicated police officers and their families. Do you have any questions on the police pension fund?
I'm going to have the same questions on both of them, and they are, where are we in terms of the funded percentage now? I don't see that specifically stated in here, maybe I'm not finding it, but...
No, it didn't make it to the report because I didn't receive it until late last week.
Okay, great.
I do have that with me, however, and I can share it with you. So our funding, now remember, this is our actuarial study, they performed the study, the valuation is as of July 1st, 2024, and for our fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026, okay? But on page nine, and I have it highlighted here, we went from 21.25% funded, that's where we were last year, to 29.76% funded. So we jumped almost 8% in one year, and that primarily, again, is because they had over $2 million returned on investments, plus the additional employer contribution of over $5 million. So overall, yes, that is making a dent.
Yeah, and on paper, that's a great number. Do we have, I mean, I assume we had some projections that we put together when we selected option two?
Yes.
Can, is it possible, I mean, so, so we've got, we've got some experience under our belt, we had a plan going into it, can we see where we are relative to, track where we are relative to...
I don't have those in front of me, and that's fine, and I didn't expect that you did, John, I'm just suggesting that maybe going forward, that that's an opportunity for us to look at this. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on the police pension fund?
Yeah, please move on to...
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Please, thank you.
All right, I'm going to skip the Compromise Plan, I'm going to go straight to the actual results. So if you're taking a look on page three of the fire pension plan... So if you're taking a look on page three of the fire pension plan, you can see here the very top, and I'm going to go to the third, second one down, John Hancock Investment Account. You can see that their investments from July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025, also increased $7 million. Total employer contribute, or employee contributions were $364,600. Total city required contributions were $1,042,000. Remember, that's on the alternative funding method, the 107%. We also had additional city employer contributions of $5.7 million. The exact same that we had in the police, so it was 50/50. They received on January 8th, $5,078,000 from the retirement fund, that one-time contribution. On February 4th, they received the remaining interest out of that money market account. On January 30th, 2025, they received their first allocation of municipal sales tax, which was $327,900. And on April 24th, 2025, they received their second quarterly municipal sales tax allocation of $320,13. Their total overall net investment income was $1,938,432.56. And remember, that is after the investment advisor fees, so a little bit less than the police, but still right in line with the same percentage of what they're receiving as the police retirement fund. Pension benefits, we have total retirement, disability, and survivor benefits paid out were $2,494,788. We have total return of contributions to former employees of $101,744. We have total administrative expense. We have insurance, traveler's insurance, that's their three-year ERISA bond, which was $452. They paid a legal retainer of $50, and they also paid Bolton Actuaries, the exact same as the police. They paid their share, which was $4,192.75 for those additional studies. Remember, those additional studies helped because that helped us get to the Compromise Plan. The overall return was 9.31%. Again, if you're taking a look at that and comparing it to the S&amp;P 500, a 13.3, this is very respectable, considering that they cannot invest 100% into the S&amp;P 500. Their allocations are dictated by, not only by the state of West Virginia and the MPOB. Any questions on that? And I do have their funded, hold on, let me get to that. So I'm answering the exact same question for you, sir. We have, their funded percentage was 23.81%. It is now 33.28%. So again, we also have a nice considerable jump from last year to this year, and again, primarily because of the $5.7 million extra contribution from the city of Morgantown. Questions on that? Yes, ma'am?
So, just, just for clarity's sake, the $5.7 million extra contribution was really the buildup of the sales tax, the origin of it, was it was the buildup of the sales tax over years?
And that's correct.
So I just wanted to...
Yep, it didn't...
We didn't come up with, at the drop of a hat...
That's correct.
...that kind of a figure to add to a pension plan. That was something that had been saved up over a number of years and sort of held until we made it for this purpose, so that then, when we, when we were ready to actually implement the plan, we had the...
Had the funds to do so. Yes, ma'am. Yep.
And Councilor Celine, if I may, that's a very good point to point out, is when we see those jumps in the percentage of funded being increased this year, we won't see that expected jump in trend here over a year because of that.
Because it would be those, it would be those same funds, plus that little bit more from the sales tax each year.
And I think, to Mark's point, it would be good for us to see, because I know we have projections, see if we're meeting them, below them, above them.
Track those.
Just lay over a graph next to the one that we had. It'd be cool to see.
One other item that, if I may, that I found particularly interesting, sitting on the pension board meetings, I ask the question, certainly when the actuaries do their estimates of what the plan will look like, I said, when we talk about it, about these 9% rate of returns, what is the anticipated rate of return that goes into our actuarial studies? And certainly, we have good years and we have bad years, but when we look at that, they do it at an anticipated rate of return each year, and the anticipated rate of return hovers more around that 5% rate. So we are exceeding that rate of return that is expected for this year, so we always love years where that's above the anticipated rate of return.
Thank you. Good.
Any further questions for John?
Do you want these? Thank you.
All right. So then, we will move on to the public portion. Do we have a list there? All right. So we ask that you come up and state your name and where you live, your location. Keep it to, what are we at, four minutes, correct? Keep it to four minutes, no personal comments. And our first person coming to speak is Annie.
I will be wearing two hats tonight, so I'm going to watch the clock. Annie Cronin, New York, Human Rights Commission. Goodbye telling you that we have set a date for the Human Rights Awards. Very much appreciated if you all attended. Last year, not so much. The people who came were appreciated, but not so many people came. So it will be December 7th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the All House, which I just secured today, like last minute.
Where was that?
The All House, Garlow House.
This is the All Center, right at the library.
Runs this very street, yes.
Would you say December 7th, from 4:00 to 6:00?
Sunday, December 7th. 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Probably December 1st through the 22nd, but who worry about that one major. Next up, Municipal Equality Index. We got our initial score and lost 18 points, which upsets me terribly because I put 150 hours into last time I go to report, and I'm not sure why they took the points away. I think a lot of things I wanted to have verified on our website, and they just weren't there, and they did the initial assessment. So Mr. Ruffey has been working with me, Communications, to get things back on the website that have been taken off, and we have to, more things have been, have never been there. I established with PD that... Had appointed somebody as the LGBTQ liaison after the previous officer left. And when I talked to this person on Friday, it was news to him that he had been appointed two years ago to fill the position. We now have his name and information listed on the webpage, indicating that anybody who has any kind of LGBTQ interaction, problem, questions with police department, speak with him. He will take your information in sympathy, and I will discuss it with, make any complaint with him. He has vowed to attend our meetings, which is very exciting for me, because nobody's done that before. Also, city administration, we have appointed Nikki Loffler, management office. She very kindly agreed to do that by just today. Okay. Back to personal hat. Annie Cronin, New York, seventh ward. The ordinance amending planting with the trees. Trees we can have and not have. Several of the species that are listed on the, get rid of now, or I don't know, let's get rid of them now, or we're just not planting new ones? I have in my yard, and I'd like my husband to take them out, so I'm curious, does the new ordinance mean that he has to take those out? Or you just can't plant new ones? Or bush and the like? Also, on the Morgantown Mosaic Pride Engagement Initiative, I would ask that you think twice about putting pride in there, as pride is an organization already in Morgantown, well-established. We have the Pride Block Party, and when I read it first time, it just kind of jumped out at me. It seems to me it works just fine saying Mosaic Engagement Initiative. Just a thought. Also, the shelter reported community of the whole from May, said that we're putting people with sex offenses in this shelter and not letting families in there with children because of the funding? And I hope that's been fixed.
Next, we have Stephanie Hunt.
Hi, Stephanie Hunt, 221st Street. My mind always blinks when I come up here, so I always write down what I want to say, so I can at least say it how I intended to say it. So my main thing I wanted to talk about today, I saw we had affordable housing on the list, and I just wanted to go through some numbers. So if you work a full week, 40 hours a week, minimum wage, your average take-home pay is about $1,200, something around there. And our average rent for the city is right around $1,200. So I feel like we have a really big conflict happening, and average affordable housing is supposed to be 30% of your paycheck, so an average person, if they weren't able to get roommates, would need to pay around $360 for rent, and that just doesn't exist in the city. It hasn't existed in the city for a long time. So I would love something on the books that can take this into consideration, especially with the East End project that's coming up. So most cities already have policies on the books that require new housing developments to include affordable or workforce units. Like, most developers are really familiar with working with those requirements. Market rate here, they said the East End Development Project apartments are going to be market rate, and we all are very familiar that market rate's already unattainable in the city. So I would propose that instead of reinforcing inflated prices across the city, which hurts everyone, from families trying to stay here, to young professionals that we want to retain, to older residents on fixed incomes, that we shouldn't allow, well, we just can't afford to let this project move forward without putting some sort of requirement in place, like citywide inclusionary zoning ordinance. So it would just require that affordability, like affordable units in every new development, developers could either provide the units on-site or contribute to a housing trust fund. This is standard practice. Tons of cities or sides do it around the country. And I'm extremely nervous that if we don't get something like this on the books, the East End project is going to be put in and add more units that most people in this town can afford. I don't, at this point, understand who they expect to be moving in there. But, I mean, we want development, but we also want it to be the kind of development that is supporting people who do already live here. And like, Joe, I know you care a lot about all of our residents here and have spoken about many things, so I know you would fully support some sort of ordinance for affordable housing. We, you and I have discussed how expensive the city is, especially for people who aren't making so much money like us. And Jenny, I know you're now on a fixed income, and it's just hard to find things, especially if you are someone who now wants to downsize and maybe go into an apartment. And Brian, you're our champion for affordable housing, so I know you guys can all work together to get this on the books. And Danielle, I know you, like, are also champion for this, and you understand the affordable housing, you work with it every day. And same with Mark, I know you also care about making Morgantown a stronger, more appealing place for investors, too, and I think this is what we need, like, something along these lines, to balance growth with affordability. And thank you so much.
Thanks, Steph.
Thank you. Is anybody else wishing to speak?
Mark Brusita, 734 Courtney Avenue, Morgantown. Speaking today as a member of the Green Team, Morgantown Green Team. Also have affiliation with the Mon Valley Greenspace Coalition, but really, I'm here as a parent, concerned citizen, and as a professor at WVU, someone who's very invested in the future of young people in our community. I'm here to support the resolution to reaffirm the city's efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions via Paris Climate Agreement. And there are many reasons to do this. Obviously, the science is 99.9% behind the idea that humans are responsible via greenhouse gas emissions for changes in the climate that we see, changes that have, as we've also seen, affected us directly in West Virginia. And the better we can do at reducing those greenhouse gases, the more chance we have to stabilize the climate and create a fair playing field for the future for our children, grandchildren, students, anyone we care about, any human being. There are obviously those benefits. There are benefits to health if we reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Having a lot of fossil fuels in the environment creates health problems like asthma, and we know how devastating they can be to our community. And Morgantown's done a very good job of striving and achieving some greenhouse gas emissions. So thank you all very much for your efforts in that respect. And again, this resolution does not affect private citizens, this is just the city taking responsibility and doing some positive things. And why is it necessary to reaffirm that commitment? I think today, in today's environment, we hear a lot of misinformation spread about the causes of climate change, and it's not, or it shouldn't be, a partisan issue, it's a human issue. And I think our young people in particular need to hear that the city is behind their future, and their future is tied intimately, intrinsically, to the climate. So the City Council here could do a very practical good thing by continuing its efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions via city energy use, and it could do a very powerful, it could send a very powerful message to younger people that the city is behind them, cares about their future, and is continuing to take steps to ensure that their future is not as dire as it might be if we didn't take those steps. The good news, too, is that there are some cost benefits from taking action against greenhouse gas emissions. So what could be better? To do what's right for the environment, what's right for the future of younger people in our community, and drop the price, drop the expenses that the city is needing to expand. So thank you all for having me tonight, and good to see so many familiar faces and new faces. It's odd not to see Bill Koepke up here. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mark. Is anyone else wishing to speak? All right. Will you move? Yes, go ahead.
Counselor Boettler.
Deputy Mayor Boettler.
Oh, Deputy Mayor Boettler, I apologize.
Brian's fine.
Formal me. Hi, Lindsay Jacobs. I live in Bedford. Just two very quick things. In the discussion, I'm sorry to go back to the public session about the warming shelter, but because there wasn't public participation, one thing that I think I understand about the campus is that the campus closes at 6:00 currently, and so I wanted to point out that with the plan to, if the plan were to be at Hazel's, there still is a little bit of a transportation problem there, too, right? If folks take the bus up there between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00, where are they, where are, if there isn't something open between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00, where are they going to hang out during that period of time? going to hang out during that period of time? So in some ways, having somewhere that's open 24/7, if one of the places can be open 24/7 and one can't, I think, you know, if you lean toward that option, that seems to make sense. Because I think that right now, there's a gap, and nobody talked about that, but maybe the idea is to work around that. So if you guys didn't know that there's that sort of gap in time right now, I just wanted to point that out. Does that make sense? Perhaps you guys know of that already. The second thing I was going to say, and I was going to go through a couple of reasons why I think that there are problems with Hazel's, but, and a lot of it is feedback that I get from folks that I see every day who are unhoused, particularly at the bookstore. But I think that actually sort of brings me to an observation and maybe a suggestion that I have for you all, which is, there's clearly a voice totally absent in this conversation, and that's unhoused people. So you have two options before you, but are you actually talking to people who sleep outside where they would prefer the warming shelter to be? You know, which would be more challenging for folks who actually sleep outside to get to. But I think that I would offer a suggestion, which is, maybe get out there and start polling people who actually are going to utilize the shelter and ask them what they want, particularly if there's going to be a heavy police presence at, if what we're talking about is a heavy police presence up at Hazel's. I know for a lot of people, that's not going to be an option for them. And so I think laying that out before folks and saying, hey, if there's going to be a heavy police presence at the Hazel's, are you still going to be likely to use the warming shelter? That's something that we need to ask folks. So I guess I would just encourage you to really talk to, I mean, Mark, Councilwoman Downs, I know you're downtown a lot, so there's a real opportunity for you to ask folks maybe which option that they would prefer, but I want to encourage everybody to actually ask the people who are going to use the shelter, because that's clearly a voice that's completely absent in this conversation. And, you know, that kind of just occurred to me today, and I'm a little bit ashamed of that, and so I think that's something that we still have time to really. So I just wanted to offer that suggestion. Thank you for having that public dialogue today. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. So we will move on to our items for discussion for tonight. First one is item A, a resolution to reaffirm commitment to greenhouse gas reductions in support of the Paris Climate Agreement. Did you want to?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And we do have our Chair of our Green Team here, Jim Coatsen, to speak with you. This is an item that, we had a great summary to start with and a public comment, and you're happy to join us. This is an item that the city originally passed in 2022, a resolution affirming support of this, the Paris Climate Plan, and we are looking to reaffirm that through the Green Team. I do want to recognize that there's been excellent dialogue with the Green Team in my short tenure here, and great progress made on some of the projects. I know that was highlighted as well, but to hear some of the progress of the things that have gone on in the past several years through partnership with the Green Team is really impressive, as a newcomer to the team, to see some of the things that have been worked on. So the proposed resolution before you recognizes that we want to continue to work towards meeting some of those goals for reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, particularly some of the one international targets identified in the Paris Climate Act, and then as well as requesting the city manager's role and staff's role to continue to work with the Green Team to assess future projects and programs, and as we build things, as we look at projects that we move forward, how we can incorporate any of those options for reduced greenhouse gas emissions into those programs as well. So I'll turn it over to Jim. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Jim Coatsen, I'm currently serving as Chair of Morgantown Green Team. Unfortunately, I have to give a little bit of history here. We have several new members on, council, new city manager. The Green Team was actually formed over 15 years ago to give advice from, basically a city working group, to support the city manager's office on various issues regarding sustainability. In 2015, the U.S. helped negotiate the Paris Climate Agreement, which, among other things, called for a 28% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2026. 2017, President Trump was elected, and he withdrew the United States from that Paris Climate Agreement. And a number of U.S. mayors and the U.S. Conference of Mayors got together in 2020. U.S. mayor's climate agreement, in which they proposed that those cities would, in fact, strive to meet the goals of the Paris Climate Agreement. City of Morgantown signed on to that in 2017, and then turned around and directed the Green Team to come up with a climate action plan to help implement that goal. We submitted that early in 2019. They had a number of recommendations in terms of energy efficiency, options for using solar energy, more efficient on vehicles, and so on. 2021, President Biden was elected. He rejoined the Paris Climate Agreement, and on Earth Day of that year, proposed to extend the objectives to a 52% reduction in greenhouse gases by 2030. The Green Team did, in fact, submit a revised climate action plan in 2022. The council did, in fact, endorse the resolution that the city manager mentioned. In 2023, the city developed their long-term comprehensive plan, the next 10-year plan, which incorporated a number of the provisions from our climate action plan. And 2025 arrives, President Trump is elected. The city had made a number of useful steps. One of those that I'm particularly excited about was an EPA award under their Solar-for-All program to put solar panels on low-income housing. And the city was going to get over $1 million for that program. President Trump has frozen those funds, so we're left running. At the same time, Governor Morrissey, just last month, proposed his 50-by-50 plan, which would essentially triple electricity generation in West Virginia, primarily focused on coal and natural gas by the year 2050, and seemed to be completely oblivious to the whole issue of climate change and greenhouse gas emissions in that. My concern is that the next administration will recognize the reality of climate change and that any investment in some of those fossil fuel plants will, in fact, be stranded costs, and we, the ratepayers, will be stuck with those. West Virginia used to have very low electricity rates. Rates have been rising faster than virtually every other state in the nation, and so we are likely to face more of that. As a result, we've put together this resolution. We ask for your consideration, recognizing that the political winds are not moving toward more action on climate change. I do believe that this resolution would be an act of courage and a return to sanity, is the way I would phrase it. It'd be a step outside the current political mainstream, but I do hope that you will consider that. I'd be happy to address any questions you have on that, and I hope you will adopt the resolution.
Do we have questions?
I've been a huge supporter of the Green Team from as long, from as long as I can remember it being in existence, and have participated in previous iterations of support for our participation in the Paris Plan, whether the federal administration participates or not. I think that we, in local government, can make the most impact as far as what we do locally in our communities and showing the value in, and savings in energy costs. So we have done some, also in there, some energy contracts where we were trying to lower our electric and other utility usage, and that was a Green Team initiative that was very much appreciated. And so this is not something that we have ever taken lightly and that we did not sign on to something and then not have action behind it. And so when you all proposed doing this again, that was my comment to you, is let's make sure that if we're signing on to something, that we are seeing those advantages for our citizens and that we would help to lower our energy usage and be more efficient with it, and perhaps offer more charging stations for electric vehicles and put up more solar panels and just do whatever we see. And I know that looking over our fleet of cars was another opportunity for lower energy costs. So I think that it's smart, and I always appreciated when our state had lower energy costs than other states, because that is useful for people who are heating their homes and also people who are trying to produce things and can cut across economic barriers and cut across political barriers, because who wants to spend more money? So I appreciate you all bringing that forward, and I would be in support of it and looking toward us putting it to practical use.
I also would like to express my appreciation for all the hard work that you put in and the frustration I'm sure you felt or feel daily from the back and forth of them changing their plans in terms of what they want to see done for our environment. But I appreciate it nonetheless.
Jim, do you have any sense of how much we have reduced greenhouse gas emissions since we've started doing this in terms of the city?
Yes. The goal was to reduce emissions by 26%, excuse me, 28% by 2026 compared to the 2005 baseline. According to the best calculations I've come up with, we're actually doing very well on that path if, in fact, the city is able to continue with their program of replacing the old mercury vapor street lamps with the newer LED lamps, about 80% more efficient. And that would probably get us to that 28% level. Taking it to the 52% level by the next five years will probably require some additional investments. Nobody likes to spend money, but I think that our goal is to try to identify some very cost-effective investments that will pay for themselves in the long run, especially as electricity rates go up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. So our-
Can we move that to the agenda?
Yes. Are we in agreement to move that to the agenda?
Sure.
Okay. And then our next item will be an ordinance amending Section 1367, Table 1367.11.01, as it pertains to the approved street tree and shrub list in the Planning and Zoning Code. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. We do have our Development Services Director Ricky Jaeger here, as well as our Chairman of our Tree Board. Thank you for being here tonight, sir, who's been working along with, as well, our urban landscape crew to discuss the trees and shrubs in our current ordinance, and is here to talk about some revisions to that proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Jamie. Greg Dahl, 105 Bellevue, Morgantown. I'm the Chair of the Morgantown Tree Board, and I'll be short with this. We have worked with Marchetta and Tom, who was the previous city arborist, to amend the existing current approved planting list as well as approved do-not-plant list. Minor tweaks here and there, moved a tall tree, such as trident maple from a short stature that would be safe or appropriate for planting underneath the power lines. Since it sometimes grows into the power lines, we moved it to a medium tall tree so that we would not be seeing those planted underneath the power lines, so we can have safe, reliable electrical power. We've removed a couple invasive species or added, removed them from the go-ahead-and-plant list for street tree plantings, burning bush. This would be saying no more planting or preferred-not-planting going forward, not talking about anything that's in the existence of the landscape right now. Burning bush, as well as butterfly bush, which have been known to be invasive, moving into the forests, displacing native plants, displacing native pollinators and other insects, as well as not providing suitable habitat for the shelter and, importantly, food sources for native wildlife, flora, or fauna specifically. And other than that, I don't know if there's anything else major in there, it's just a minor.
I would like to note this item's been heard by the Planning Commission, and it was supported, no vote of 5-0 unanimously.
Good. Discussion on this item?
This was hard to make.
I give credit to the former city arborist, who did the amendment. It was an older list that he just amended.
And this is a recommendation for private citizens, but this is more for what the city will or will not plant and where, as opposed to what a private citizen wishes.
Thank you for that clarification. This is for more, hopefully the citizens would look at that and say, yes, I would love to follow that, but it's just a recommendation there. It's also a recommendation for our landscape committees, as they are, development committees, as they're looking at what plans to plant.
Mr. Jaeger, you have a comment you want to make?
Just a quick-
You're fine.
Just a quick follow-up, the chairman said.
Yes, so when there is new development in the city, those landscaping ordinances are reviewed, and the tree planting list that contractors provide to us need to meet those specifications or need to ask for various, so in cases of new development or substantial rehabilitations that require additional landscaping, those ordinances are consulted.
Thank you. Anything else from council?
Please.
As someone who really appreciates a good plant, I, my neighbors aren't too sure, because there are quite a few plants in my yard, but I just really appreciate updating these lists, because sometimes one year's, you know, wonderful to plant, this is great, then the next is, turns out to be a little bit too invasive. So it's smart to keep up with those trends, and particularly burning bush, you see in our parks just taking over for where there have been some really nice native wildflowers and plants, and it's not good for the pollinators, and it's not good for people, because you just don't want all of any one thing in an area. You want a nice, a nice mix. So appreciate you updating the list.
It's good, too, this list came out right before our Arbor Day, for those looking at plant.
And we are not texting these trees.
On the do-not-plant list.
Thank you for your clarification. I apologize.
All right.
Add it to the agenda?
Yep. My clemish.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're on to item C, ordinance amending city code, Section 147.O2, providing for membership qualifications and terms for the Land Reuse and Preservation Agency. City Manager, do you want to?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will be presenting on this item, as well as any assistance from Attorney Simonton. The Land Reuse and Preservation Agency was originally stood up in 2018, and when I joined the team, there was some active dialogue about the team making sure that they have a joint understanding of the direction that that board is wanting to go in, and part of the discussions that were going on is the makeup of their board in order to ensure that it comprises of an appropriate group of citizens who can drive this forward. So that board has been discussing what they would like to propose to the city council to consider for some amendments in their board makeup. One of the main items that they, and I'll run through the highlight of the changes that they are proposing for you all to consider. They are not proposing necessarily to change the number of members that are on their board, but they would like to designate that one of the seven members, it's currently a seven-member committee, they would like to designate that one of those is the role of the city manager, and they would like to increase that engagement from city management and city staff. It's part of the goal that they've expressed with that. They also have expressed a goal that they would like to add some ex officio members, which would be made up of a member of city council, the city attorney's office, the Development Services Department, the Housing Authority, and the Economic Development Authority. So looking from an ex officio standpoint to engage the dialogue of some additional partners. They are also proposing to look at the wording for the qualifications for the members in order to hopefully assist with filling it. As you can look, we're not substantially changing or proposing changes to the way we're looking for- substantially changing or proposing changes to the way we're looking for what type of people are engaged in this. We are combining item D and E previously are combined into one, and instead of going through and saying, well, we will have three from these categories and three from these categories, simplifying and just saying, we want representation across all four of these categories that are being defined. So there is some goal and effort to try to make the board still comprised of a group of individuals who are focused on the efforts of this board, but make it a little bit easier to fill. The other side of that is they are recommending that new term limits be implemented. So currently they are keeping the current terms, which is a three-year term, but recommending that no member serve more than two consecutive terms. So those are the changes that they would like the City Council to consider. Certainly, if we move forward with these changes, not only would we look for the adoption of this ordinance, but would be looking for, council would then have an ex officio seat on that. So we would be looking for who would want to be involved as the ex officio designation from council on that board. Attorney Simonton, anything to add to that?
I think that's an excellent description. Thank you very much. I think the only thing I would add for background, since we don't have agency representatives present, is that my understanding is the agency's main goal with this proposed reorganization has been to improve coordination with the City Council and with the City Management, and that's the reason for looking at those designated seats for a council member and the City Manager. They did their homework. They talked with members of other agencies throughout the state and arrived at that as a good mechanism to serve that purpose. So I think that would probably be their recommendation to you if they were, if you're talking to me.
Suggest adding to the agenda. Jenny, do you have-
Did you have a comment to make?
I have a comment whenever.
Go ahead.
So this is a longstanding group, so I'm trying to remember exactly what year it started, but most of the members on that board right now would be in their second, in their second term. At some point, if people can only serve two terms, pretty much everyone on the board would exit on the same, relatively the same time. I think we would have an interesting situation on our hands. And so I didn't know if some, for instance, Botanic Guard Board that I serve on as Representative from the City, and they do a nice job, by the way, of having some ex officio members. It's interesting because they have people who go off the board for a term, and then they have the possibility of going back on again. So that if you had someone who did a really nice job and wanted to take a break for a while, but then their particular skills and interest in maintaining the items that are going on, I just, there's something about two terms and then you, you want turnover. Like, look at this council. There's been a lot of turnover over time. And then there's people like me who stay. But there's, there's, it's just, it's good that in all organizations in my mind have a mix. And so I don't know how you promote a mix in this organization, but if after six years you lose all your institutional memory, you might wish you had one or two that could come back if they wanted to and, and we wanted to reappoint them. Or just think about how that'll look in reality.
It's a good question. And I should have addressed a part of that when I talked about the ordinance originally. So the way this ordinance is set up, it will create new terms beginning January 31. And if you look at the packet, it states an effective date, January 31, 2025. We'll update that to 2026, of course, for your first reading if you move it forward. But, and then sets up staggered terms so that even if you do reappoint those same members and they, they end up hitting those term limits at the, at the same length of terms, those will be staggered two per year because the terms are staggered. Also, I should say this, not required that you adopt those term limits in the ordinance.
I mean, if we want term limits, we should have term limits. I'm just, I'm just wanting to think about the effect of it and, and whether, whether two terms is the right number, whether three terms is the right number. I don't know.
How many, how many of them would be done based on the term limits right now?
So the way this is currently drafted is everything would start new. So everybody would be able to serve two more terms-
This would be their first original of the two terms.
On top of this.
Yeah, yeah.
And it just addresses two consecutive terms. So certainly people couldn't sit out and come back. It's not two terms total, it's just two consecutive, so they could take a break and come back.
So would we have, take a break and come back? Is that part of how it's written? Because I was looking through it, and I thought that was in there, but I didn't see it.
Which is saying consecutive.
But this would be their initial of the two consecutive.
Starting, Jane.
Yeah.
So even though they've served, those don't count.
Yeah.
That's right. And this doesn't start till 2030.
Twenty, twenty-six, next year.
Six. Oh, the two terms starts then?
Yeah, yeah, January 31st.
All right. Well, I appreciate that there's a solution for that because it did not look good to me.
My question was, it says on the website anyway that they have seven members. Do they, they currently have seven members?
No, I don't. I do not.
There are seven seats, but I think there's one empty.
One vacant.
Okay, all right. I was just wondering who we were kicking off.
We don't have to.
No.
No, yeah. I'm not a fan of term limits in general. I think it's a little different.
We appoint the members. So I think we, we can control that. And if someone does-
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah. You can not reappoint somebody. I think for appointments is a little different, but yeah, generally, I'm not a fan of term limits.
We cannot put them in?
Yeah. But I'm good to move this to an agenda.
So if we were to ask to, to take the term, would we do that in the next meeting?
Yeah, we'd amend it then. Because we can't take official action now.
Or we could send it, or we could ask for that to be done before the packet comes out.
Ask that to be the version that's brought to us. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If that seems to be the interest of council, we can, we can update the introduced ordinance for your next meeting.
And I've been attending many of their recent meetings, and I know that Ryan, you've been there, and Jamie has been there. You don't think that, or I'm not trying to lead anyone, is it an issue for the ex officios to include the staff member? Do you foresee that being a problem with staff?
I've talked with the staff that is listed currently. I think that there was some original dialogue of how they interplay with the building official, code enforcement, how all of that interplays, that there was some initial concern of how that could be structured. But I think the way it's currently written and proposed, which leaves it at the Development Services Director or their designee, allows us some grace to be able to monitor if there's any concern about who's participating, or if we run into issues, that we can create some different approaches.
Okay.
Yeah, so City Manager or Designee, and Director of Development Services or Designee. Just wanted to make sure that that wasn't providing, or producing an undue burden on.
I appreciate that.
So I think our consensus is that we'd like to see on next agenda without term limits is everybody, unless somebody disagrees with that. Okay. That's what we would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is item D, an ordinance amending Articles 1718 pertaining to the Vacant Structure Code. City Manager?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, I'm going to allow Attorney Simonton to lead this one. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. This, this update is on the request of council in a general sense. The Vacant Structures Code has been in place in the city for, for a long time. It is authorized by state-enabling legislation at West Ridge 38 dash 12 dash 16 C. And a part of that code requirement is that the, the governing body grant exemptions from the Vacant Structure Registry when it determines that a given building cannot be occupied for a set period of time through no fault of the owner. And so because of that, City Council has an exemption procedure under the Vacant Structure Registry, and the Vacant Structure Code itself includes provisions for people to request exemptions. Because of how that has been put in place at this point, when people are making those exemption requests, they are commonly set on the next agenda of council and then scheduled for a hearing later where, you know, staff are present, the property owner is asked to be present, and City Council holds that hearing and then, and then issues a decision at a later time. Particularly with the change to a standard hundred-dollar-per-year vacant structure registry fee for properties that are not in a dilapidated condition, that has created a lot of time spent by City Council on those exemption requests, and also a lot of time spent by property owners on those exemption requests that I think a lot of people felt was not being well-used. So this ordinance revision is presented to try to address that concern. And along with the ordinance revision is a proposed update to the City Council exemption procedures. The ordinance revision itself adds a couple of definitional terms respecting appeals from vacant structure registration requirements, which are administrative in nature and are a challenge, that the, the structure does not meet the definition of a vacant structure. And then also for exemptions, which are what I just described, that's done by council. And then kind of updating within the ordinance, the process for this. The, the procedures themselves are intended to streamline the process for making decisions on exemption requests for both City Council and for property owners. They require that city staff prepare a report on those exemption applications, and then that report is delivered to the property owner and City Council. Any council member and any property owner who's made the request has a right to request a hearing, but if they do not do that in a set period of time, that staff report will just become the decision on the exemption request. So will allow people to avoid the time and expense of coming to a hearing if they feel they don't need to, in a council, of course. If you have questions about that or want to talk details, happy to do that.
Or just move it to the agenda.
Yeah, that works fine, too.
Appreciate you explaining that.
This is something that we have talked about. Let's do it.
Yep. All right. No further discussion. Next, we have an ordinance of the City of Morgantown amending the zoning classification of three parcels of real estate business near Hartman Run Road from I-1 Industrial District to B-2 Service Business District.
Thank you. We have Ricky Yeager here, Development Services Director, to present this item.
Deputy City Manager. Deputy Mayor, members of council. So this ordinance would encompass or rezone approximately 13 acres of land adjacent to Hartman Run Road, Everlasting Lane, and the Morgantown Municipal Airport, from an industrial district to a B-2 district. And while the application was initially submitted as a different zoning district, after review of the comprehensive plan, the B-2 service district seemed most in keeping with what the intent of the potential rezoning of that property would be in the future as a business and technology district. In the packet that you received in the staff report, it included excerpt with the different development typologies that are associated with what would be a business and technology district. And so the B-2, even though not necessarily the same as what was proposed in the comp plan, is in most in keeping with the intent of that. After review, the Planning Commission moved, moved to forward a recommendation on the council that the proposed amendment is consistent with the city's land management plan and the vote was 4-1-0. The applicant is also here this evening, so if you have any questions or concerns, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. We have any discussion on this item?
Why was the one mask with the holdup was for the one person that voted against it?
So in the application, as well as in the staff report, the intended objection or objective of getting the rezoning is to eventually allow for residential use, which is permitted by the B-2. So that was a concern that was brought up by that particular board member. And we discussed that. There were some conditions that were listed in the staff report that kind of addressed those concerns, along with consultation from our airport director. But it was decided in consultation with the Planning Commission that those conditions would be more appropriate, and those concerns would be more appropriately addressed at a site plan review, where there would be, in this particular case, would be a development of significant impact, which would require the Planning Commission to take a look at this case again. So that was the discussion, and that's how the vote ended up.
Thank you. What, what were those conditions, Ricky?
So generally, the conditions were looking at trying to mitigate potential issues with the airport. So mitigating noise concerns, different measures with regard to the development, asking the developer to sign an aviation easement, and some other things in there that, again, after review, we felt would be more appropriate to deal with, and so did the Planning Commission at the site plan review stage, because we're only looking at, or at least council and Planning Commission should only be looking at, the zoning designation because- This is resumed, doesn't mean the actual, you know, a particular use will happen or not, so.
Does, does that in any way encumber the, the potential use?
No, because there's no conditions associated with the recommendation from the Planning Commission at this time.
Okay.
Staff had recommended adding conditions and the Planning Commission, we were-
Gotcha, I understand.
We were kind of a split board on the conditions and the use and things like that, but at the end of the day, we're just looking at that zone and whether it is appropriate in that area. And we opted to move that forward without any conditions, with the understanding that any type of development on this property, which is currently, you know, a grassy hillside, would need to undergo a site plan review for a significant impact development. So conditions could be added at that time.
Gotcha.
There are a lot of concerns about, you know, B-2, is every potential use in B-2 compatible next to the airport, things like that.
Yeah. I think I was reflecting back to the, to the packet that was going to Planning Commission for consideration.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Thanks, Danielle.
Any further discussion?
Move to the agenda?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Next up, we have item F. Ordinance of the City of Morgantown amending the zoning classification of one parcel of real estate on East Brockway Avenue from R-1A Single Family Residential District to R-2 Single and Two Family Residential District. I think Ricky, you're back.
You might as well just stay with us for a while, Ricky.
I think Ricky's here for like most of the rest.
Yeah, sounds good.
Hi, Ricky.
Again, thank you. So this ordinance will rezone an approximately 4,800 square-foot lot from an R-1A district to an R-2 district, which is a single and two-family residential district. While the property appears to have been a legal pre-existing non-conforming use for almost 20 or two decades, 65 Beach Street lost its grandfather status because it was vacant for more than a year and a day in accordance with Section 137305 of the city's planning and zoning code. The applicant is seeking a zoning and map amendment as they have made improvements to the multifamily dwelling. Please note, while multifamily dwellings are not currently permitted in an R-1A district, they are permitted through a conditional use permit from the Morgantown Board of Zoning Appeals if the property is rezoned to R-2. Staff has discussed this with the applicant, and they have submitted a conditional use application to the Board of Zoning Appeals for consideration pending council's review of this matter. After review, the Morgantown Planning Commission moved to forward a recommendation to City Council that the proposed MAC amendment was consistent with the city's land use management, and was appreciative, I think, generally speaking, of having this additional layer of review with the Board of Zoning Appeals to look at the, the nature of the intended use, being a multifamily dwelling, having three units, and that being subject to a conditional use permit. That will conclude staff's report.
And the applicant, I should say, I'm sorry, the applicant is here. He can answer any questions that he may have.
Discussion? All right, let me just move it forward. The only thing I wanted to discuss on, on this particular item was, I guess, just to clarify for everybody listening, what Ricky was saying is that this home traditionally housed three separate families for a long time and then lost its grandfather status. So they were looking to get that back. They were unaware of that until this point, right? And so that's why we'd be making this change. And the R-2 change would make it available for two, but not for the three unit. So that's why they need the conditional use. The only other thing I wanted to bring up, too, was that we had discussions about this before, that I think that this entire area where this is located is probably ripe to be upzoned to R-2. And I think, for, for folks that don't know, maybe are listening at home, this is kind of close to Bow Park as you're going past the breakfast cafe, but you were to go straight.
Close to Marilla Park.
Yeah, what did I say? Bow Park? Yeah, okay. Close to, yeah, but that can mean a lot of things. Close to Marilla. And, and I think like, probably that entire little area could be upzoned. And I think in your report, you had some- And I think in your report, you had some other properties that were likely.
Yeah. If I may address that.
Yeah.
Yes, Deputy Mayor, so the staff did a dashboard survey, and there are probably three to five properties that would be pre-existing nonconforming uses. So that's when looking at in totality, we didn't think that that would be not consistent with the comprehensive.
For sure. Yeah. So it'd be good for us to look at it for upzoning in the future.
And if you've been in that area, I think three to five is probably a very conservative estimate.
Yeah. Yeah, just just ones you could readily identify. Any other further discussion? All right. Move it to the agenda.
Move it to the agenda.
All right. So next is item G. Affordable Housing Initiatives. Director of Development Services, Ricky Yeager.
Yes, thank you. And Ricky, I'll talk briefly as we're getting your presentation up. I know this is an item that's been of a lot of interest and certainly is an item that city council has steer, put forward some direction that they'd like to see some progress on. We recognize from a staff perspective that through transition, there was a hope that this would have been delivered much sooner. We do recognize that and want to make sure that we're expressing to council at this point that we know that the importance of getting this item back on track and delivering the necessary reports. And so we'll outline today what's been done so far, some of the programs, plans, and initiatives that staff's been researching, that we would like to have some further direction from council, whether tonight, future meetings through different groups, we have some different paths forward that we'd like to discuss. And so then we will outline those at the end of of different ways that we could potentially seek that guidance to see some of the movement on some of these policies and programs.
Thank you, City Manager. Appreciate that. Thank you, council, for giving me an opportunity to speak with you about this important issue. And just kind of underscore what the city manager said, we believe this is really the starting point of a longer conversation about what will be appropriate in our committee. So the exists of the list that you're going to see today and what we're going to briefly discuss and touch on is no by means exhaustive. What we hope is that we actually get some more input from the community and refine these these concepts or ideas a little bit further, and then over time, bring them to you as official proposals for policies, programs, and initiatives to adopt. So just in our overview, so we'll just take a look at the council resolution from 2024. We'll look and define what affordable housing is and some other terms that mayor may come up through the presentation. We'll also briefly touch on, of course, what the national crisis, state, local issue is with affordable housing and specifically look at the city's need assessment that was completed in 2020, as well as the comprehensive plan update that was completed in 2023, both of which had a lot of input from stakeholders and were opt, as the comprehensive plan was adopted by council at the time, as here's the policy guide for leading on this issue. We'll also talk about work completed to date. We'll go over those potential policies and programs and then talk about next steps going forward. So you should have received a copy of the presentation, and there's also a reference material guide. So I just wanted to point out that this document here simply takes excerpts and important highlights from the Morgantown Housing Needs Assessment and from the the comprehensive plan update. That's what all those items are in there. There's also several reference materials that staff looked at in developing what we were going to talk about tonight. So thank you on that. So again, council resolution gave the city manager and the development office basically four directives. Analysis of current housing affordability challenges, review of comparable policies and programs, potential impact on housing development on the local real estate market, and recommendations moving forward. So to date, staff is really taking a look at those first two items. We reviewed the housing challenges that we face based on those planning documents that I referred to. And we've also looked at a number of resources from the National League of Cities, from the American Planning Association, from the Land Institute, from the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, and other folks who are many, many agencies, as you all know, are engaged in this from different perspectives. But their all, their end goal is to try to help communities, big and small, develop proposals that will hopefully move the needle on some of these issues. Defining affordable housing. So there's a difference between affordable, housing affordability, which talks about the general costs, and affordable housing. And in this conversation, we're talking about the typology, the types of structures or units that are considered more affordable, and then how do we get them built, right? And so I think it was already mentioned at one point tonight, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as looking at the total use of someone's household income and not exceeding 30% of their household income on housing-related certain issues. You are considered cost burdened if you are north of 30%, and 50% according to HUD if you are severely cost burdened in that regard. Other terms to look at, we're talking about affordable housing, so we're looking at the market side of the equation. The the housing needs assessment looked at, focused more on the market side of this issue as well, but also did talk about, obviously, some subsidized affordable housing opportunities and the need there. One other term that's defined, especially when we're looking at what is affordable and what types of units are affordable, is what's called the missing middle. So that can include everything from duplexes, duplexes, and townhomes, all the way up to courtyard colleges and buildings. And as we'll see later in the presentation, traditional or conventional zoning has sometimes zoned those things out from happening. Approximately 19% of the city's land use is zoned exclusively, for the most part, as single-family blocks. So that's taking out the missing middle component, and that's not being permitted in those districts. And that's that's conversation we can have, but just that's just on, that's just the reality of it. And so these are some examples that you see on the screen, and thank you, City Manager, you're just rolling with that. I appreciate it. These are some examples of the different types of housing types that are considered missing middle, so stacked duplexes, side-by-side duplexes, again cottage courts, and townhouses. So again, at the national, state, and local, I mean, you guys are probably all familiar with these, and you all have these discussions and these issues. Regulatory costs, right? Going through the acquisition development, going through a local government to get your per, your project permitted, those are all things that are part of, you know, we need to look at, and we're looking at affordable housing units, how to make them more feasible for our community. Financing. Inflation and interest rates. Cost of materials continue to be high. And then the housing supply and demand, right? We have a deficit in housing units in this country and in this community, and that's going to drive prices up. That's just, that's, that's how it works. Over that in a few minutes here as well. But I just want to point out the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, and I believe that there's a leaf in your, in the reference guide materials, does a great job laying out each one of these issues graphically to show over time how interest rates have fluctuated, when they've coincided with major, you know, major turns in the economy. So I'd encourage you to take a look at those, and maybe staff can just maybe pull those out and provide those to you. But it's, they did a great job on point of information there. Simple housing supply and demand curve, right? So equilibrium, that's where we want to be. Unfortunately, we are, you know, well, I shouldn't say unfortunately, but just looking at the man curve, anything north of that line of equilibrium would be considered a surplus in housing. So that's typically when you see maybe a pressure to, housing costs will come down lower. But right now, and for the last 10 or so years, we've been operating below that equilibrium, which is a deficit, which is what's causing a lot of the housing demand to go up. And this, I think, slide is, highlights even further. So this is a line of basically the supply and demand curve. And if you look from 2010 all the way out to present day, we've been in a continued deficit. And according to the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, we're approaching, if this one says 3.2 million, if you could extend that line out, we're approaching 4.7, 4.7 million units. That are not being produced. So we're not keeping up with the man across the country, which is increasing the pressures across the board. So that leads to the headlines, right? And the newspaper on your phone that you're seeing about housing affordability, home prices hitting record highs and those type of things. More closer to home at the state level, this graphic represents the amount of housing units that are, that each state is deficient in. And as of, I believe this was conducted in 2023, for instance, the state of West Virginia was deficient or did not have 5,000 housing units that that this study looked at and said it needed. And obviously, when you look at other, other, other states much larger than us, that need increases significantly. So again, looking at the local issue, we looked at Morgantown Housing Needs Assessment and the comprehensive plan. And the next few slides that we'll go through is basically going to go over kind of some data points for reference. The housing needs assessment looked at two basic study areas. The primary study area was the area highlighted in blue, which was Morgantown, and it's an immediate urban area. So think about kind of like the west front planning district being that kind of center area that's in the county, but it's not in the city limit, but it's very urban. That included those those communities in the study. The rest of the study looked at everything else in Mon County. So if you see PSA or SSA in the reports, that's the difference there. Affordable housing, the median household income according to the American Community Survey, five-year estimate, was $42,245 household income in the past 12 months. You can kind of see the the spread there in terms of household income. And then when you look at the report, looking at what the, you know, average rents are or home prices are, you can kind of get a feeling of where things stand in terms of household income and then what we'll look at in a second, which is what the housing needs assessment projected are critical issues for the community. Gross rent as a percentage of household income exceeds over 60% in terms of the population that are spending 13% of their household income on rent. And that's reflected in the number of units of projected housing needs assessment that Bowen researched for us, which basically says almost every income category related to rental housing is in high demand. Everything across the board, with the most critical being extremely low, which they define as rent is $550 or less a month. So it's across the board. It's it's in demand. When we look at selected monthly owner costs as a percentage of household income, that does come down significantly. It's about 17% that are people are cost burdened. And then we look at the housing needs based on the housing needs assessment in 2020, we can see that, you know, high-end, moderate income is still relatively high in demand in terms of housing typologies or products that we are needing in our community, so that's why our need. To underscore this point, the housing needs assessment in 2020 said that identified that there were 637 households that were on a waitlist for the Choice voucher program. And according to the Housing Authority that had met with, yeah, I believe a few months ago, that number is almost doubled. So the it's, the, 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 the need is growing more and more, and this underscores that. So work completed to date. We looked at all those resources that we referenced in your reference material guide. We looked at a couple of different programs. One was the Housing Accelerator Program that was developed by the National League of Cities and the American Planning Association. And that was a really good resource to consult because they basically took best practices from around the country, cities big and small, and then analyzed them and kind of came up with some guidance in terms of, you know, while this may be appropriate and this policy may be appropriate for a larger community, a smaller community may need to look at that same policy in a different light. So we'll talk about those things in there. The other thing that we've done already as a team is consulting with the state of West Virginia Development Department on a potential ARC power grant to basically allow us to work with the housing authority to develop some of the property that they have between Stewart and WVU's Organic Research Farm. It's about 20 acres, so that's a typo in the presentation, but about 20 acres of land, it's not 25 acres. So again, here's kind of the list that we're looking at right now after doing that initial cursory review. Again, this by no means is exhaustive. And so we're going to go through these, but and if you have any questions along the way, please let me know, and we can have that dialogue. That's, that's okay. First is the First Time Home Buyer Program. So the the initiative here is basically help folks build wealth, right? Especially income households that may not be able to afford a mortgage on their own. This was something that was recommended not only in the housing needs assessment, but as well as the comprehensive plan update. Obviously, it would require the city to partner with other folks to come up with a funding strategy, as well as a program and implementation process. But again, it could help eligible households to build wealth, and the fiscal impact would be ongoing in order to sustain that program. Owner-occupied rehabilitation, this kind of gets to the fact of trying to help people age in place, or it gets to the fact that our housing stock is aging, and for those who, you know, they're fortunate enough to own their home, but, you know, they're on a fixed income and there's a big need that arises, we have a storm, we have a, you know, a issue like in this particular example, where there's obviously a roof or there's a whole roof or something going on. When those things happen, being able to address those critical needs through a program like this. Again, it would require financial contribution, it would require partnerships, hopefully with others, and it would require the city and its partners to develop some sort of application and implementation process to develop this. This was also mentioned in both the housing needs assessment and the comprehensive plan update. Accessory dwelling units. So a resident, and this is, this is the definition that's coming from a planner's dictionary. Accessory dwelling unit is a residential dwelling unit, but not a mobile home, located on the same lot as a single-family dwelling unit, either within the same building as a single-family dwelling unit or in a detached building. So as you can see by these examples, you can have detached ADUs, you can have attached ADUs, you can have interior conversions, both the basement or upper level of an existing property in, as an ADU. And this is an example, just, next slide, please. This is an example of what some of those look like in in reality, right? And we can all think of those, you know, especially the detached example, which is where you actually have, you know, a carriage house type situation where you have residents on the, on the second level. But it's important to point out that ADUs are dealt with differently across the country. A lot of communities that we researched have implemented a registration process for those to make sure they're safe with meeting building codes and those type of things. There's also a difference between maybe whether something like that would be citywide or whether that would be more relegated to owner-occupied, having the decision to want an ADU on the property, have the responsibility to go through whatever process would be set up to permit that type of use. But ADUs are definitely gaining in popularity around the country as a way to address this short-term housing issue. And there are some examples in the state of West Virginia that have already done that. And so we have looked through some of those policies and recommendations.
So when you say owner-occupied, do you mean the primary residence could not be rental, it would have to be lived in by the owner of the building and then rent the ADU?
Correct. And that's, it differs across the country. We've seen models that go back and forth. I think that, if I recall, the the ADU that was adopted in Parkersburg, West Virginia recently, strictly makes it to, or it has to be an owner-occupied. But it, there's both sides of that argument, both sides of that discussion. So there's other ways to to regulate these as well. So that's something that we want to get input on and feedback, so we can help bring proposals to.
Yeah. So owner-occupied would be a way to do this kind of incrementally, that you would, I mean, you could do that and stop, or you could say, oh, this is wonderful, and you could, you could enlarge it by removing the owner-occupied.
That could be one approach. That's what council and.
If that's what, if that's what anyone wanted. But owner-occupied would be a way to at least keep, it would be a way to have, have, have some, but not have it everywhere all the time. Not, not just kind of let it loose across a city would be to put it on owner-occupied, because we have a lot of rental properties. So if you had it in rental properties as well, you might kind of overwhelm the.
The other consideration is, and kind of getting to that, is we have to probably want to look at family definition, too, because that regulates what's happening in the single park.
Look at what?
Definition of family in the zoning codes, which allows, you know, for like in single-family dwelling, or single-family residential districts, it's no more than 200 related people. You'd want to probably, in conjunction, doing this, look at that terminology, too, to see how that would or would not align if you had an ADU policy or program on books.
And what happens when someone moves?
Pardon me?
And what happens when someone moves, right? Someone moves from their owner, if they're owner-occupied to another city, and then they have somebody in their accessory dwelling dwelling unit, then, I mean, it's definitely , it's definitely quite the issue.
And that's why some cities have started to develop those registration programs. So similar to like our rental registration program, we'll use a regular check every so many years to make sure that that ADU is compliant with all the standards that the city would put on it.
And I think it is important anytime we we talk about new program implementation, which is, I think, as we get towards the end of the presentation, we'll talk about how we flush out further some of these options. I think anytime we're putting in type of programs that are increased compliance review, you know, registration, there's an expectation, there's a resource need there to manage those programs. So I think that we not only have to look at what we balance between, you know, do we, how much regulation do we want? And if we are going to have the regulation, do we have the appropriate resources to to enforce such regulation? So I think that's always a valid part of the conversation as we we build that in to make sure that, what does that mean?
As well as parking.
As well as parking.
Yep.
Absolutely. Thank you, Zimian, appreciate that. Any more on this? Okay. So inclusionary zoning, it's already mentioned a couple times tonight. So inclusionary zoning is a growth management tool used by local governments to require developers to make a percentage of their housing units in new residential developments affordable to low-income households, also known as incentive zoning. So to kind of illustrate that, and you might have seen this, there's lots of different illustrations available, but the image on the left, the building on the far left of the screen is basically, this is an example of what would be permitted by this city's zoning code. So if they were to come in and they, you know, they didn't need any zip areas or anything, they would be able to build a five-story building, it'd be fifty-eight thousand square feet, they have fifty-eight market rate units. Inclusionary or incentive zoning says, well, we want this new development to have X percentage of affordable housing units, and we, that would have to be defined, right? What, what, what does that mean? But in return for setting aside or making up a percentage of those units affordable, we're going to allow you to do a couple of things. One, we're going to allow you to maybe increase the height of your building, which is going to allow you to then add more units into the project. Or we're going to allow you just to increase the density overall, however the developer would want to configure something like that. So in the example on the right-hand side of that illustration, that same project with a ten percent inclusionary requirement, this community would allow for a fourteen percent density bonus, which basically means more units. Would allow for another story to be added, and as a result, you get six of those, what is originally planned, just fifty-eight market rate units, six of the sixty would be made for affordable housing purposes. So again, you know, there's different ways to look at this too. Sometimes it's by mandate, sometimes it's incentive, sometimes there's a hybrid approach. But it also, I think, we need to be careful about the market, right? So larger cities, larger municipalities where projects are going in where there are two, three, four hundred units, really large projects, those are probably easier to pencil out. Right, in terms of a development, a developer's performance, right? Setting aside a certain percentage in return for getting some sort of benefit back. And smaller communities, I, I, you know, I think we're looking more at incentive base. If you do this, we, you might, we may expect this, this type of, of benefit to your project. But again, that's something we need to explore. But I definitely think that this is one area that we definitely need to be looking at in terms of opportunities. The same thing, so this is just a, a project to illustrate that this is a mixed income project on the south side of Chicago in the Bronzeville neighborhood. It was oddly enough, it was forty-six million dollars on Forty-seventh Street in Chicago, and it's a, again, mixed income project. But I just wanted to tell you that because obviously it's got some, it's got housing components, it's mixed use. But this project took ten years to come to fruition. And in order to make this work, their capital stack, how they financed the project included TIF, included a direct loan or grant from the city of Chicago, as well as a tax equity infusion of funds. So these projects are difficult. Even at this scale, they're difficult. So if you just, just keep in mind the perspective when we're talking about inclusionary zoning on a larger scale versus a smaller scale. It's also important to remember that, you know, one of the things that the comprehensive plan points out in, to a lesser extent, the community needs assessment, but- Our opportunities for new growth and X property are limited. So we're going to have to focus on infill development. So what does infill look like where appropriate? Obviously, we want to keep the, the character of the neighborhoods intact, right? That's a priority in the comprehensive plan. But where you can go up or out is highly encouraged in the comprehensive plan. So again, if we're looking at that- Combined with some inclusionary zoning, there's an opportunity there to make these things happen on a larger scale. This is just another reference point from a new subdivision. Again, probably don't have the opportunity to do that here, but again, allowing or requiring some of the units in a new subdivision to be made for affordable housing as well as market rate housing.
So for those situations, when you're talking about affordable housing, are you talking about, because we need, well, it looks like we needed across the whole spectrum, different types of housing, but if we need workforce, what I've heard over time, are employers in the city that want their workers at every income level to have housing. So we need to have very low-income housing, but we also need kind of moderate income housing so that there's workers.
Yes.
So when we're looking at this ten percent of affordable housing, how are we defining affordable? Is affordable very low income, or is affordable a variety of lower income? Or how do we, how do we, you know, when the National League of Cities is looking at this, how are they defining that?
I don't know exactly how the NLC defines that.
Feel free to not know that. Because I think, I think probably different communities look at it differently. So, you know, it could be that there's just not enough of the very lowest income housing, and so they, you know, somebody who's doing this is focusing on ten percent of that. But it could be, you could have a little bit more complicated formula where you had, you know, a few different price points that you inserted into a larger development so that you had kind of a variety of lower income housing so that you could meet some of the needs, like some of the needs on High Street that people have expressed for having employees that can afford to live here, so that then when it's snowing out, you need someone to come in, or people in the medical community who are doing all the different jobs that you need at a hospital, they need someone that can live closer in, because when there's poor weather, you need all of those different people to keep a hospital going, so.
And it's those type of things we hope to get out from those listening sessions too, is that type of like information input?
Yeah.
Right? Just to add to that, if I may, some of those thresholds are also driven by the sources of funding for the project. So obviously-
Ah, so they would have a formula for, for what they-
Yeah, so cities can set their own thresholds, but if you have, if you're, if you're using tax, loan or housing tax, for example, there's going to be certain thresholds that you meet, you're going to have to meet those, and you're going to be eligible for.
And so kind of while we're looking at those things, it seems like when there's high housing costs, I think that what, what we miss out on or some of the things that we don't see are, you know, like for instance, this idea of how you keep a hospital running or some other, something that needs to happen, whatever the weather, whatever the situation. And just having workers available at, at all the different income levels. Insolvency, you know, people not being able to afford, I appreciated the one that you had where, where they were talking about taking existing housing and helping to rehabilitate it. And then people moving out of your area so you have more commuters, and then clogging up all your roadways because people can't live in Morgantown. And then also, obviously, these are obvious, but when you think about it, they're super important to your population. So if people can't pay their bills, they can't make purchases, then we have, if their housing costs are so high relative to income level, then you have trouble paying your bills, you have trouble making purchases, you never dine out or rarely dine out. So somebody might think there's a lot of people living around them, but if they're all have really high housing costs, they may not, for a restaurant or some business that's trying to, that, that needs people that have a little bit of extra income, some disposable income, they won't have, because the housing costs are so high. So anyway, appreciate what you're doing.
Appreciate that, and just one other, and a lot of times you'll see, whether it's across the city or it's more limited, these type of developments are usually also driven or impacted by alternatives to transportation, right? So if we're talking about parking reductions and requirements or inclusionary zoning, if you're going to allow for more density and a trade-off for some of these things, usually they're going to happen in a, in a more transit-oriented area, because the idea is we're getting a bigger development, more people, so we've got to have them be able to get around their communities pretty easily, or not add to congestion and things of that nature. So those are all those types of considerations that I think we need to look at holistically with any one of these, these, these actual projects or policies. So again, another, another, and this has been coming up more and more in the news lately, is the difference between conventional zoning and form-based codes. So the map on the right-hand side is the city's existing land use map. And again, if you look at just these two shadings, which also includes WVU's properties, but this shading here, the bold, is this lighter, fuller manila color, that's about nineteen percent of the city's land area. If you don't include WVU. Most of WVU's properties are zoned as an R1 district. But having said that, those, those districts only allow for- Single-family dwellings, that's it. It's not until you get to the R2 where you allow for the option of a duplex or through a conditional use permit of multifamily dwellings. So conventional zoning, lots of land uses, land use classifications, and then assigning those uses to districts. The opposite of that, or not the opposite, but another way to look at it is the form-based code, which says we're going to look at the built structure and the environment first and uses second. So in this, in this instance, the form-based codes are primarily driven by what's called the transect model, what's, it says like from the rural country side to the, basically city center, here's these transects, and in each one of those- Those transects are some general characteristics that we need to be thinking about of how lots are laid out, buildings are developed. What you will see though, especially in like hybrid approaches where you have some conventional and form-based codes, is you have a lot of work and description on how the building is built, set back, all those things, but the land use tables are minimal. So for instance, we- Have a lot of different uses in our, in our zoning code that relate to retail sales, whether it's apparel, whether it's this or that, we have a lot of different uses, right? In some of these codes, it simplifies that a lot. If you're general retail, and here's the definition, you fit, because the idea is whatever's going in to these built things, right, the, the use is secondary, you care more about the form and the built environment. So- That's an example. Here's an example here on the next slide. This is from Newark, New Jersey. They actually went to a hybrid approach, and so this is an example of their form-based code, and specifically dealing with mixed-use buildings with residential and non-residential uses, and it lays it out. So and it's a different total formatting to what we're used to as staff and what you typically see in a conventional zoning code. But again, a lot of these sometimes are for larger communities that have that really gradient of different types of uses from their periphery, which is more suburban to their urban core. But it's also being done in small communities as well, even more on a larger scale. Reduced parking requirements, so this strategy is to reduce costs associated with new housing development opportunities. And there's a couple images on the slide, the upper image on the right-hand side, and that's blown up here, is basically show a living space versus a parking space. And developer in their projects have to account for that parking as part of their project, and there's obviously a cost involved. If you think about a large project that we talked about, like two, three hundred units, you've got to have underground parking or a parking garage or something to accommodate that, so the expense is going to go up substantially. But where you can, reducing that barrier to having so many parking requirements off street can also allow for more building, more space to develop, more, in this example from Boston, the image on the right is reduced parking requirements, what does that get you? It gives you more development- Public land. And also gives you an opportunity to do more community improvements and enhancements in the public space. So that's just, yeah.
Let's build more housing and not more parking.
Correct.
How about that?
Yeah, so for instance, our, our, in our single-family dwelling units have a requirement of two off-street parking spaces. Some of the research that you look at says really that should be one. Right. So I bet, you know, we need to look at that, right? If we require two and we go down to something lower than that, that's something we definitely should look into, but how does it impact it in different neighborhoods and along major corridors? Adaptive reuse, you probably all heard this terminology before, retaining overbuildings repurposing them, right? We have examples of that throughout our community, which we're very fortunate to have. The example on the screen is a project where a school was converted into senior housing. It was funded by a low-income housing tax credit project in Canonsburg, PA. But again, fitting into the neighborhood characteristics, and this built density, right? So this was all parking back here on unused land. They decided to add on to the existing old school facility and add more units of affordable housing for their senior population. But it fits within the neighborhood. You don't see that big density when you're driving down the main street, again, that gets back what we just talked about, form-based code, that gets back to whatever parking requirements were required for this project. So this is another avenue that we should consider. And then next one, just development centers more general, looking at ways we can either streamline, prioritize projects in this manner that provide affordable housing units. So tax rebates, fee waivers on building permits, plan review priority, and public-private partnerships. And the last one is just one to- I had a couple examples on. This is an example from the next slide, when we're talking about public-private partnerships. This is Crete Side, Indiana, if you're familiar with the Columbus area, it's right next to their airport. So this is a mixed-use project on the bottom part of the screen is housing on the left-hand side and then mixed-use office, event center, whatever on the right-hand side. Reason why I pointed out, this is a great example of a public-private partnership. It had its problems, and it still does, but everything north, or basically above ground, was developed and paid for by the developer. The parking that was needed for this project, underground, was paid for by the city and its partners as a public-private partnership to reduce the costs associated with the project. Another example, and probably more realistically, is being able to help offset utility improvements or other improvements that are associated with land development, whether it be a, a small mixed-use building or something of a new subdivision going in. How could we partner, the city stakeholders partner to reduce the costs associated with infrastructure for these projects? One thing that's been looked at is reference in the comprehensive plan, I think both in 2023 and the previous one, is this idea of looking at, trying to establish a home investment partnership program, which is similar to CDBG funds in terms of it being at direct allocation from HUD. But this program is specifically designed to, to promote affordable housing specifically. You have to meet certain requirements. So with, with these types of funds, you can, you can support what are called certified housing development organizations. So think about Habitat and other, other folks in that space of building affordable housing units. You can help finance their operations to provide affordable housing units. You can talk about rental assistance, you can talk about first-time homebuyers, you can talk about owner-occupied. So this would be a way to also help fund some of those things we've already talked about. Now, this would require us to consult with our, our, our consultants, you need me on this, and probably have a larger conversation, not with just the city, but the counties and some other stakeholders about how to put this together. Because we would probably be operating or would have to operate with a consortia. I don't know if the city itself or- Have the population and the need to be able to, to establish this on its own.
Do you need, do you need like a hundred thousand people?
Yeah, there's some thresholds that I have, this is more research, but-
What?
Yes. So for instance, a couple of the consortias in West Virginia are made of a few municipalities and the county. Or maybe just some municipalities. And then they share the responsibility of developing the annual action plans that you do for each year. Every year, developing those in the first city for affordable housing. And then something that was again brought up in the comprehensive plan, emergency rental assistance, right? The Mount Air Rental Assistance Program is no longer available. There's a housing development fund that was, you know, a product of, of a nineteen, the pandemic, so those funds are not accepting applications for those. But again, this is also an issue to keep properties affordable and keeping people in them. So with that, again, this is no, by no means exhaustive. But what we want to do going forward is the rest of this quarter or this year, what we do is have some listening sessions around the community to get more input on these and prioritize which one of these, not prioritize which one, but prioritize what council and the community would like us to work on. And then the first quarter, start working towards developing the actual policies and programs and bringing them to the appropriate agencies for review. Kind of preempt your, your, your next discussion point on your agenda is what does that look like, right? So kind of two things, on the left-hand side, obviously getting input from the community. We want to start doing that now on a, on a larger scale. But then having some way to process that, whether or filter what, what we're bringing or thinking about, whether it be through a reconstituted housing advisory committee or a city council subcommittee, to be determined, right? The other part of it is then looking through, once we've got the input, we've got the prioritization, and we start drafting the policies and programs, then the, the adoption process. That would obviously on some of these things bring in-
on some of these things, bring in the planning commission would be involved in that as well.
So. But that's where we are to date, and this is the proposed path forward.
And happy to take questions.
Sorry.
Yeah.
How does the idea of universal design fit into this, making sure that we have accessible units for people that would use them throughout their life? So somebody who some point in their life might require a wheelchair or crutches or, you know, a lot of our housing, because of our topography, it's super hard, even, you know, if you have a gathering at your house and you have steps coming in or some other barrier, steep driveway, it's hard to, it's hard to accommodate people who need to get around who aren't using their legs the same way anymore. And it just seems like in our community, we could really use more universal housing as people age and also just the, you know, somebody needs, it's a knee replacement or they have balance issues, whatever, whatever happens in their family.
I can't speak directly to those regulations
In terms of like if
There's exemptions for
Things that are beyond, you know,
Somebody's control. But I know like, for instance, in low-income housing tax projects, universal design is applied. So if you go into a lot of those, projects have been funded with those dollars, you will see building codes are being implemented where the
Have time or house are lower to the ground to make it so that, you know.
So I know they're being
And widths and access.
Correct.
And access. And I just think as we're weaving this together, that needs to be a consideration of how we can be as accessible as we possibly can be as a community. And that's probably also a separate issue, but while we're putting any dollars into housing or adapting people's housing to their current needs or whatever we've got, we need to make sure we're thinking about that. And then, I guess, along with those considerations of what happens when somebody's overpaying for housing, what happens to the rest of their paycheck, the more that we do have housing central to the city, if you go to other communities that have fewer cars in their downtown and more housing, so for having fewer parking requirements and more housing, then you end up with a much more livable downtown because you have your customers right there. You have people near your schools, so you don't have as many, you know, cars online to get into the school or all the different things that could happen, the more densely and the more we put near our businesses, our housing, so.
Just one other
Appreciate.
The B4 district has that exemption.
In terms of to a certain square footage, buildings of a certain size do not require off-street parking.
With the assumption that it's obviously multiple modes of transportation here, right? And because we have other parking opportunities here, at least the downtown, the B4 district does not require off-street parking. There's certain, but that doesn't exist in other parts of the city, but in the downtown it does.
And imagine someone's disposable income, if they're not paying for a car, takes a chunk out of somebody's paycheck.
So you have in here fourth quarter facilitate listening sessions. What's the plan for this? Because we're, tomorrow's fourth quarter.
Have we not been in a listening session for the last five years? I mean, what?
Yeah, so what
We still, we still need to do them.
I've been hearing them.
Over the next three months, like, what's the plan for gathering public?
So what we'd like to do is organize sessions around the community, making them available at different opportunities and times, and basically have an open house to come and say, you know, while we went through a comprehensive planning process, it said ADUs were recommended, right? In the comprehensive plan, to validate and get a little bit more granular in terms of what that program would look like. Do you want to see, for instance, it just be owner-occupied, or do you want it to be citywide and available to rental properties? Those type of things. But that would be the plan, is to have the listening sessions and help us prioritize what we're hearing as like the top three or five items that we need to work on, and then start bringing those to the workshops that we've been having with a subcommittee of council or with the housing advisory committee or some other structure to get the input, right? Because one of the directives that you gave city administration was, how is this going to impact the real estate market? We really want input on that, right? If we go and pass or implement inclusionary zoning in certain parts of town, what will the impact of that be?
Will we see
Positive results? Will it move the needle, or could it have unintended consequences? Those are the conversations that we want to have.
Pardon me, Ricky, but weren't we elected to prioritize these things?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, weren't we? I just want to acknowledge that.
Yeah.
This is frustrating for me to sit here and listen to this. We have a comprehensive plan that was put in place that documented these things. We've got, that's been done for two years. We've got updated zoning that was completed two years ago. We've got, but yet we're, and I'll go, I won't, I won't belabor it, but the time to move forward on affordable housing initiatives was, was way in the past. So I'm not comfortable, I'm, you know, I've got, I've had an accessory dwelling unit policy drafted that Ryan and I've drafted for, for five months now. Have you looked at it?
Yes, I've had an opportunity.
Okay. You know, I want to start moving some of these. Our community needs us to start moving some of these things forward. And I look at this and it just, it looks like just more planning, and we need to start seeing some results.
Thank you, councillor.
So what would you like to do to accelerate that? Would you like to have some sort of a session where we set some of the priorities before it goes to a listening session? So we're sort of shortening the timeframe, or how would you suggest that we can have?
I'd suggest that, I mean, to my, to my point, Ryan and I drafted, drafted an accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Let's, let's get feedback on it. Let's start moving it forward. Form-based, Form-Based zoning, I think we've drafted that one, haven't we? So, or at least it's
Do we already have some? We already have some.
And Form-Based zoning is covered under the updated, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the two, the updated zoning that was completed in December two thousand three, twenty-three?
It's recommended as an approach to look at.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
And there's some input, or
No, I would not, I would not consider our zoning ordinance.
Oh, all right.
It's not.
It was touted that way, that there was a little beginning to it, because they had some photographs of the different options.
I think that the planning commission has been begging to do some of this zoning work, and we keep getting put off, put off in favor of small rezonings or subdivisions, which we do a whole lot of. I'm not sure that's what most people on the planning commission would prefer. I mean, certainly that needs to be done, but I think that there are people who are ready and willing to lend their expertise to doing more, and we're not being given that opportunity. And I think people are getting frustrated. We've lost a couple of members of the planning commission over the last year or so.
And I think, I think that's been like that probably for decades here, where people wanted to do a little bit more with, with furthering this issue. And I think that if we're being offered now this opportunity to do this, it's hard to, it's hard to not do it somewhat comprehensively if we just do one thing, like accessory dwelling units, and we don't look at it enough comprehensively and use the skills that people have on the planning commission and put together something that works as a, as a bit of moving parts, we're not going to get what we need just with accessory dwelling units.
Jenny, I'm not suggesting that that's the case. I'm not suggesting that that's the case. I'm suggesting
If something takes five months versus two months.
That we need to do something.
Yeah.
We need to do something. One thing. Just one thing. Let's do one thing.
If you guys have worked on an ordinance, can I see it?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, you haven't showed it, then you have, I didn't even know about it just now. I didn't see. Did you have, do you have it ready?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, and
Just send it to us, Mark. Let me read it and see what we're talking about.
Okay.
And so maybe that can lead to some of the other direction that we'd love to get today is what the path forward looks like and not to bleed too much into the next items discussion of do, do we want to just take this ordinance and kind of to flush it through? And I think that we have another ordinance on the agenda today that I appreciated, kind of the back-and-forth dialogue with staff as we flush through some of the practical concerns. Do we want to create a subcommittee of council to really hit some of this legislation? Do we want to use that housing advisory committee? I think if we lean towards using the housing advisory committee, there's probably some modifications or changes that might need seen to that group to bring it back to life a little bit. But certainly would look for council direction on, you know, as we tackle these things, as we prioritize these things, is there a smaller work group that we can really start to focus through grinding some of those details out? Because we certainly want to be thoughtful of the details there.
I just want to be clear. It's not to say that public input is not important. I just think we can like
Do both.
Do both at the same time. We can, there are a lot of very intelligent and people full of ideas in the community, and we certainly want to hear from them. I'm happy to participate in any kind of listening sessions with you, certainly happy to participate. But if we have a couple of things that we're working on at the same time, like the ADU ordinance or some zoning changes, I think that we can do both things at the same time.
And, and the loudest, and I'll just, and thank you for that. I do appreciate, I will say that, and I agree, but the loudest public input that, that I need to hear is under one percent population growth in the last eleven years, right? There's a reason for that, and it's primarily housing. We've, we've got to do, we've got to do something.
Well, and land area.
That's why density matters. I mean, this whole
Right.
Much of this conversation was about density. That's why density is the solution. And, and we, I haven't, I haven't distributed that just because, you know, just because it wasn't ready.
It sounds good. You just
Yeah, 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 yeah. And I will, and I will. You've seen by now how I work with that stuff, so I will, and it's ready. Jamie's had it. That's pretty much it.
All right.
Yeah.
So I have
And he does stuff, he does sound stuff if you ask. If you don't know to ask.
I'll send it whether you ask or not.
Yeah.
I have a few things. So the first thing is, I am trepidatious about this plan for public input. If we don't have like an idea for a venue, time, and all that stuff when we're three months, we've got three months left in this quarter. Like, to be honest, Ricky, that doesn't sound like we have a plan for public input. You know what I mean? I, you know, I, I try to get public input a lot, and giving people that amount of time, I mean, I feel like we could give people two months and, you know, lead up to something right now, and we might not get the kind of participation we need, anyway.
And I will add some of the, sorry, but some of the things that we talked about potentially doing is, which is things that we already engage, but as we attend some of those neighborhood meetings, engaging in some of this additional dialogue and working that in, and so that is part of some of the thought processes on that.
I understand that, but we should have specific sessions around. That's right.
Sure.
That, that people can show up to and give their, give their feedback on and think about ways that we can encourage engagement from a diverse population of people, right?
Terrify, would you, would you base those conversations on specific topics, or is it more open-ended in terms of like having multiple? What would be your vision?
I mean, for, what I would say is, okay, the way I would do it, the way I would do it is I would have a panelist as speakers, probably like Crystal, say, from FMHA, or other people that can be like direct stakeholders into these sort of things that we're doing. Have, you know, the participants kind of listen to, here's what the problem is, and here's the kind of solutions that we're proposing, and then have them all go into little breakout rooms and, you know, do their thing and talk about what solutions that they would like to see implemented, and then, you know, gather all that together inside of some kind of data collection and then
And you could include people like Mark who have specific ideas that they would like to
Sure.
You could include a councilperson. You could include someone that wants to develop.
Like real stakeholders that have an effect on the actual housing situation, so that people hear ideas that can be concrete within our community.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that, but my, the ideas that I have aren't dissimilar from the ideas that, you know, are pretty well accepted as best practices that Ricky ran through in the presentation. You know, if, don't, don't mistake my, my frustration is, is I have
This is your moment to actually do it, right?
Yeah, I just want
So, so this is the moment to be like somewhat appreciative that people have listened and that they put forth effort and that they're wanting to get the public feedback that's pretty much required when you're in a public position.
So the, the other, I have a few other things, but I do not, nor do I particularly care for this idea of missing middle or diverse housing types, that we should prioritize that. Developers are not exactly out here saying, man, I wish I could build more high-income housing. I just, dang it, I need those government subsidies to build those high-income housing. We're, you know, in the business of trying to make sure that, you know, we're taking care of the housing situation. We're talking about an inelastic good, right? If we're talking about economics, something that people always need that a market has control over. And so, you know, when you have your, your graphs here, and you're talking about like supply and demand, or you talk about, most especially, a deficit here, is something that's interesting about that, right, is that you have a surplus and then deficit, and then a surplus, and then another deficit, but a huge enormous deficit because we haven't done anything to address building for that period of time. This is always going to happen, right? Doesn't matter if we, if we do get some kind of surplus, there will be some kind of deficit because this is how market forces are going to work. Yet, we're doing this with a good that those fluctuations mean that people are often dead if they don't have it, right? It's the same thing with like healthcare and food. So the building and the prioritization of extremely low-income housing puts less pressure on our middle-income housing and things of that nature, because trust me, I have plenty of people that I have to move, that are extremely low-income that have to move into apartments that they cannot afford because they don't want to be out on the street, right? So those same apartments then probably should have been rented by somebody like me or somebody who makes a little bit less than me. So those pressures can be relieved by low-income housing. So I, and also, like, the levers that we have to pull are probably not so much in the direction of, again, like I said, I'm sure landlords would love for us to incentivize them building high-end housing, but is that something that's a good use of our resources, right?
You guys
I was going to add
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know if I glossed over in the presentation or not, but community land trusts is another way to
I don't remember seeing that, but yeah.
I don't remember seeing it either, but that's a great point.
That's a way to reduce the equity cost, right? So you're only, so that's another, another avenue to, to look at, but then we need people in that space to do it, right? Because it's, yeah.
Do you think that FMHA would be positioned to help establish community land trusts? Fairmont-Morgan County Housing Authority?
I would say I would probably want to engage a bunch of stakeholders.
I got you. And I think, so one point in your presentation that I just wanted to address real quickly too is, yes, that housing voucher waitlist doubled. It's not going to go up anymore because it's closed, completely. But, so the need grows, but we're not going to have any more, anybody else on that list. In terms of the ARC grants, where are you at in that process? And what, like, what kind of level of engagement have we had with ARC over the years, Appalachian Regional Commission?
So I haven't had that engagement with our grant writer.
Yeah.
I'll turn maybe to the city manager to kind of talk.
Yeah, maybe that's not a question for you, but yeah.
Yeah, if I may. I work closely with our grant writer, so when we were, the recent ARC power grants came to us, city manager and I and our grant writer sat down and talked about a number of potential projects and understanding the importance of housing in our community. We reached out to Fairmont-Morgan County Housing Authority to see if they wanted to partner. There's been, for quite a few years, we've been looking at the property they own, two different larger swaps of property, you know, and as an organization with a mission towards housing, wanted to see if we could work towards them. So we are in that process. We did get, I believe, our letter of intent submitted and approved, and so now we're in the process of writing that grant alongside the FMHI and for that application.
Great.
And that is particularly for a feasibility study
Yeah.
To come up with a plan to overcome some of the hurdles on that property, the larger property up there, so that it could potentially be potentially be used for affordable housing.
I know we've talked about that before.
Yeah, we referenced the plan that they, that they mentioned, this was the plan that they mentioned a few weeks ago when they presented to council. Fantastic, thank you.
So, the rehab program that you were talking about, I think something we should consider, maybe you could have in your public listening sessions, is us incentivizing rehab programs that would also incentivize people to keep housing on the voucher list, or add them to the voucher list. We have those people that are on waiting lists, and we don't, you could ask Crystal, but like, I'm sure we probably don't have much housing stock that's being added to that list, and a lot that's being taken away over time. In, like the city of Pittsburgh does, where if you want to rehab your home, but you currently have a voucher holder there, and you understand that, like, I could rehab this home and make more rent, then, well, you tell us, you give us a receipt that says, here's how much my rehabilitation was, and here's how much I would have charged in rent, and we will pay for that difference, but up to a certain cap, right? Yeah.
In those programs, absolutely.
Yeah, so it'll, I think it allows people to not live in substandard housing, like many voucher holders do, and it also gives landlords like a real reason to keep people there, instead of just like saying, you know, I'm keeping people here because nobody else will rent from me. Do we have an idea for inclusionary zone, you said on your slide, that you need to check into what state law allows? So what is, what do we think, what kind of roadblocks do we think state code has for inclusionary? Okay, so we don't know yet, okay. Yeah, the, I wanted to address, it came up a couple times. I sent an email out, it's probably like a month ago at this point, trying to schedule the Housing Advisory Committee to see if they wouldn't, wanted to continue to exist, or if people on the board were still interested, or the committee, I guess, is still interested in serving. I heard back from three of them, in terms of like being willing to schedule a meeting. I heard back from two of them, one of them was Drew Cantus, of those three.
Good employee.
Right. Two of them said, one of them said, I haven't been on this for years, and I don't know why it'd still be on a mailing list.
Yeah, they haven't been.
Did you hear from them too, or?
No.
Okay. And then another one said, my work commitments won't allow me to do anything with this anywhere, anyway.
You're at the point of reconstituting it if you want to use it.
Right, which we'll get more into in the next item, I just wanted to make people aware. That's all I had Ricky, unless other people have things I wanted to bring up. No? Okay, thank you Ricky.
If you all, if you all have parts of this that you care about the most, I would certainly let our administration know what those pieces are, so that that's part of the focus as we have any kind of public listening session, so that you're finding what we're doing to the items that you care about the most, and that applies to all of us, but then you might get back more of what you want. Just a single question.
Yeah, yeah Jenny, and I suggest that I've sent you a long list of things, right, so I do, and Ricky, don't mistake my frustration for enthusiasm for the subject matter.
Appreciate it.
Or the other way around.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on to item H, discussion on options for city council committee structure. Thank you Ricky.
Thank you Ricky.
Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. This item came at the request of the city council of how we could look at different opportunities for council engagement, particularly as it relates to creation and flushing out of legislation, recognizing that there's often various things that go along with that. We've talked about some of that tonight, whether it's working with staff on the input, working with public feedback if appropriate. So, staff has provided a couple of different example models of what that could look like. That is not saying that any one of those models is the right model, but we've provided, attempted to provide some options to, for the sake of conversation tonight, that range for, from a very comprehensive model that takes a look at how we do our strategic planning in, you know, concert with how we do our boards and commissions, as well as legislation. So, some of the items that come before city council, how we can incorporate those into subcommittees, if you will, to address more than legislation creation, down to not necessarily establishing any type of formal subcommittees, but maybe as we have items come forward that we want to address specifically. For example, this would be a great topic of conversation, of if we wanted to create a subcommittee to continue to move these initiatives and policies forward as we work on affordable housing, that may be appropriate avenue. So as these topics come forward, we stand up these subcommittees, and we kind of sunset them once their purpose is over. I think that's something that we continue, can continue to explore if we go in that less formal direction, of how committees that maybe are longstanding and not having purpose, we can sunset once we've established that goal. Some might be outstanding, so I can certainly run through the different options if you like, but you all have those in your packet, and this is really intended to be a council discussion, and staff is here to take guidance, and then if we can reach some type of consensus, staff will put together some further parameters for us to consider and adopt based on that feedback.
Okay, thank you. Do people feel like they understand each one of the options? Is there, before we get into discussion of them, I just want to make sure people are clear on what A, B, and C are, C and D are, and if not, then let's take a moment to clarify what they would entail.
Seems pretty. They understand the options. Seems pretty, I mean, five committees, three committees, one committee, or working groups.
Yeah, I mean, you're there.
And those are certainly just examples, it doesn't have to be any of those options.
I think we're, I think we're cognizant of the possibilities.
Yeah, good.
If any of you have something you want to say about that, though, feel free.
I mean, I guess I'll, I'll kick things off, I guess, I appreciate, to the point of the last discussion, I mean, I appreciate that these give us forums to talk about explicit policy, and work collaboratively towards those kinds of ends, rather than, you know, just, you know, me and Ryan working on some, you know, kind of, or any individual counselor pulling somebody in and kicking something off, and, you know, and then trying to build support for it. I think they give us, go ahead.
What I was trying to make a point to you is, I see your frustration, I get it, but we don't know that because you're not telling us.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We don't know you have an ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, I mean, if we don't know what's going on.
And I, and I'm, I'm learning the process too, right?
Right, I understand, I was, trust me, I know something, two years ago, I get it. So, that's all I'm saying, I see your frustration, so just show us what you got, and let's help you.
Yeah, 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 and I'm not projecting any of that back, but I appreciate that kind of these formation of these subcommittees give us formal, more formalized avenues to work forward, move forward on policy initiatives, and I'd suggest that, you know, the groupings of those, I mean, we're not, this body beyond us isn't going to ever have to stop working on policy, right? So, you know, I think, the idea of, I'm more in favor of seeing something more institutionalized than special purpose, just to kind of kick that off, whether it's five, three, one, you know, but something more institutionalized than working groups.
How many do we need to get done, what you all would like to get done?
So, I'm still in favor of the five, most especially because I think the original idea was like, the five council members that are not the mayor and the deputy mayor sit as chairs of those. So it gives them, I think, focus areas that they can all work towards, that everybody can work towards on these different things that are part of their time on council. I think part of that should be also pulling them off of their duties with their current boards and commissions, unless it was something, you know, like Bo Park or Parking Authority, that kind of important outside entities. And, you know, so reduces capacity mostly, you know, mostly in one way, and then allows for more capacity that's towards actual policymaking, and gives that, gives like, I think it flattens a little bit of the sort of power dynamics of council, in some ways, but also, you know, gives everybody their kind of issue area that they can work on, that like is specifically targeted towards policy, is looking for these boards and commissions to be bringing those things to them, and if they're not, then the subcommittees will still be working on that policy. So it's more about like accomplishing these things, and then making recommendations about those boards and commissions, being more directive towards them. So, that's why I favor the five.
My concern with the five is that it becomes too watered down, in the sense that you're too divided, like we already are in terms of communicating, because right now the concern that I've heard is that we're not communicating enough in expressing our goals for policy, and so with five different subcommittees, we're still completely separated.
The issue with communication is that we don't have a formal place where that's engaged in, right? And so that's what these subcommittees are meant to address in the first place, because if it's the only way, the only vector that we have to working on them is private conversations that happen behind closed doors, then you'll never get there, right? And so that's the whole reason why these would exist.
I just feel like with five, it's almost too many, because it even, I mean, even it says on here that the multiple items being discussed would be going across the five different models, whereas like with the three subcommittee, it allows for more collaboration to make it easier to converse.
Or even one. I mean, we want to focus on policy, why not focus on policy?
That's, I agree.
Yeah, and-
I mean, if you really want to focus on policy, I don't think we need five committees to focus on policy.
So, one of the, well, one of the other things that I've heard from people is like, so we're going to add another meeting, right?
Yeah.
You have one, then you're adding another meeting to everybody, and you keep everything kind of the same, and we have a bunch of boards and commissions that are still doing little.
So do we develop policies, do we develop, do we develop policies-
Even with five, we still-
Separately at five different committee meetings seems a lot of-
And with five, like I said, with five, you would pull your boards and commissions that you're currently on off of your plate.
Why?
Because they would be reporting to each one of these subcommittees.
Could they not report to three subcommittees?
What's that?
Could they not report to three subcommittees?
They could, but who, how then do we-
I don't have to be a chair of a subcommittee, at all.
Right, how then do we choose who's going to be on those subcommittees, right? That's the other concern I have about that.
I mean, the goal would be that all of us mix enough to know what each other's working on, to support each other and come up with something good. So how do we do that in five committees? Because I don't, I mean, are we going to go to each other's? Just describe a process, so if somebody has an idea, describe a process going through, I just, I've been, I've been knowing about this for a while, and I've been thinking about this for a while, and I just couldn't quite see how it would encourage mixing. And I want people to hear, if there's committees, I want people to hear across the city what people are working on, like if-
So let's take, let's take Mark's example of the affordable, of the housing policy you have, what would the step be for that? With five committees?
No. So, ideally, you would have that worked on, however you want it to work on, right? So it could be introduced into the Housing Advisory Commission, or it could not. But it could come to whatever subcommittee that wants to work on it, they flesh it out in terms of policy where they actually have a discussion with staff, right? And it's in a public meeting in which people can have feedback and talk about it amongst one another, and then you say, here's what the discussion was for the subcommittee council, and here's what we would like to introduce in terms of that ordinance, you know, would we like to put it on the next committee, the whole. So, I, I guess I just don't really get where it is that like, this is less communicative amongst the council bodies than how we are currently-
Who said it was less?
That's what I'm hearing.
Well, I feel like you're misconstruing. I said that my concern is that it doesn't totally resolve the communication aspect. Never said it was less, I just said that it's not intermingled.
So, okay, but how-
It's a bunch of separate meetings.
Yeah, so, no, I'm curious how it's not. So like, do you just mean because like other counselors won't have input on that subcommittee?
I'm saying because it's all separate meetings, so you have five different meetings, so like, I don't know, so if you have five different meetings, five different people overseeing the five different meetings, and Mark takes a housing thing to one of the committees, and I don't sit on that committee, and for whatever reason, I don't get an update that day, so I have no idea about what went on in that meeting. So we're still in the, relatively in the same situation, so how can we make it so that we can intertwine this easier? So with three meetings, you would have two council members, based on my thought process, per meeting, so it would allow easier cross-communication between the different committees.
You're also getting out staff either five or three times more compared to, you want time, you want time for people to work on things, you want committees of people that are like-minded to work on them, and then you want people who aren't like-minded to know what the heck's going on. So somehow, whatever the structure is, if it's five, or if it's three, or if it's one, how do we kind of, how do we, how do we get expertise, how do we pull together? And how do we get divergent thinking in there? So, I just, I didn't know if you had one committee, what would happen? If you had one committee, then if somebody had something really important, they could work on it. They could go to whatever the expertise committee is, they could bring it back to the one committee. I don't know.
The city attorney's probably going to kill me. Hi Ryan. I'm still concerned about section 2.05 of the city charter E that says, council shall not appoint or otherwise establish permanent or standing committees for the conduct of council business. I guess that depends on what you define as council business, but I'm having a hard time with the idea of developing standing set committees.
Well, then we could go to the fourth lot item, which is when somebody wants to do something like housing, that we have some sort of-
That's what we do now.
But I mean, we haven't done it in a long time, but yeah, that's what we can do now.
Did you address that question, though?
So that's a correct statement of the charter limitation. Our charter is set up to prohibit the conduct of council business through committee, rather than through the council as a whole. I think, you know, it's the charter, so there's not like established case law, and this is probably within the spirit of that provision to establish committees for a particular purpose and for a limited period of time, so that the council does not have a set of committees that always operate that will be making decisions about the budget or making decisions about housing. But that's, that's obviously within your purview as policymakers, and you ultimately kind of need to make the choice about whether you feel that is appropriate within the charter limitations, or what level of that you feel is appropriate within the charter.
And was that the idea behind, I'm sorry, I'm starting to not feel well, is that the idea behind the five committees was they're attached to the strategic plan, so it's kind of more for a set period of time along with that strategic plan until there's a new plan in place?
It'd be a tenured committee.
That was part of the thought process.
That was part of the thought process of connecting it to other purposes as well.
That doesn't mean we couldn't take a three subcommittee and attach them to elements of the strategic plan, though.
Yeah. I'm just asking, because I love a good charter role.
If I may just add a couple of considerations as we continue to contemplate the way forward. Certainly, you mentioned staff support, we, whatever framework we end up looking like, we want to make sure that we can support this in a way that is very productive. So I do acknowledge that we would hope that some of these working sessions could be more during-the-day focused. Certainly recognizing that some of them may not be, but recognizing that limitation from a staff perspective and making sure that we can execute there. So want to highlight that, want to emphasize that is my vision as we have these subcommittees, that it does provide an opportunity for that staff back-and-forth engagement. I think that's very important, certainly council here is, to direct the policy and set the policy as you all see fit, but appreciate any opportunity that staff has to kind of bring those things forward. So that is a piece that I appreciate as we continue to consider that.
So is there any consensus on what we're leaning towards? Joe, it sounded like you wanted three?
I, I just feel five is too many. Like I know, whether it's three, one, or sticking with our current format, but five, five to me feels like too many. And it, it feels like we're just gonna end up in the situation we're in where we're talking in circles about things.
Like we've been doing about committees.
Don't make any committee meetings than you want to attend. You know, if you like, like, you know, like if, if this is an idea that we're gonna get behind, do you want to go to five more meetings, or three more meetings, or one more meeting? How many meetings would it take to actually accomplish the task? Like, like what will be really used? Whatever it is, what will be really used? Maybe it's two committees. I don't know.
I guess my other question, too, is how often would these committees meet?
I mean, staff could help with that.
Because I mean, that's, that's the other part of it, like-
I don't think it should be monthly.
Like if the subcommittees are only meeting-
You think monthly?
I don't think so.
If they're only meeting every other month, or if they're meeting every three months for like quarterly to, to collaborate on whatever their boards and commissions are working on. But at that, I mean, by that point, though, like the stuff you're working on wouldn't need to be five committees, because if we're only meeting quarterly to discuss policy, I don't know. I, that's just my two cents. I just feel like five is just too many. It just feels like it would become watered down. And it wouldn't accomplish the goal of getting the policy out quicker, especially since like the big, then when we're talking with Ricky, he's trying to make these move along a lot faster. I feel like this might just add more layers to process.
For some things, you might want a working group or some, or a policy committee. Or you want, Matt wants something that meets like every two weeks to, I mean, if you're feeling like you really wanna. Whatever you make it, work for you, or us, or the community. However, I mean, I mean, make it so it, so it fits how many times you like to meet, or how many, like-
I will say, it was very convenient to, for, when we created the Health Insurance Subcommittee that me, and you, and Dave were on. Being able to attend that and get regular updates from staff about issues that were going to come before council because we were going to have to make budget adjustments and things like that. That was very convenient, and it made it much easier for us to share information. But I don't know, that's kind of fizzled out. We haven't done that, so it was not like eight. I guess theoretically, it's, it's still going, but-
Was the issue addressed, though?
It's ongoing.
But-
It should be ongoing.
Like you could have one for housing that had three people on it, and then you could even have somebody, or two people on it. You could have a third seat that people rotated in and out. You know, you could have somebody come, a different person come every month, or every two weeks, or how, you know, if you're trying to do kind of an accelerated thing, you could have-
I sometimes feel like our problem with our committees and our boards and everything, like we all were talking about, there's no real end goal, right? So to create a subcommittee with a, with a measurable end goal, I think would help a lot of- So like we talked about the warming shelter, you know, earlier. So if the whole end goal was to create a concrete plan for the warming shelter, I feel like that kind of subcommittee could work quickly at the encouragement of other council members with little obstruction. So I, I'm just getting late now.
That subcommittee has been me and Jamie and Emily, I think. Mostly Jamie and Emily.
Do people, do groups of seven, do committees of five, like, is a committee of five more like a larger group? Or is it, or do people of our size have five committees? That's what, I just didn't know. Where the, where the numbers came from.
Oh, Jamie.
They're just looking to provide some different options. We've certainly looked at different committees, do different avenues. A lot of them similar to that third structure, not necessarily three, but topic-based focused areas. So I think it's kind of all over the board, Ryan. I know you did a little bit of looking at that as well.
Yes.
The idea of five came specifically from the strategic plan. There were like five.
There were five areas.
Scott, that came from, yeah.
Doesn't necessarily, I think, mean that there are five council people on every committee, right?
No, definitely not. I don't think that was the intention.
Yeah.
Two, maybe three.
Each committee.
Right. It's comprised of, you know, a council person and some, some other expertise from the community and/or staff.
Or people that they can call upon at that time.
There'd be multiple council people per committee.
It could be.
Could be.
Because that's how it was like one per committee.
It could be.
But even then, that would be extra.
I, I was saying, ideally have one council person chair. Sorry, Mark, go ahead.
I think, regardless, to your point, Joe, I mean, I think there needs to be some, some, some systems put in place for communication to, to, to keep, you know, council as a whole informed on the activities of those, those committees, right?
You could start a phone training.
And, and to that end, I mean, I, you know, like, like, you know, this is a little bit like Goldilocks, you know, for all of us. We need to find the right porridge. And, but for us, specifically.
The agenda.
I just, I just want to, I want to, I'm chomping at the bit. I'm like, you know, coming in here new, chomping at the bit to work on some policy stuff. And, and I, and I want to work on it with every one of you. So however we do that is fine by me.
So I appreciate when you all have those agenda meetings and you send out a recap. It's great for increasing communication. So I guess we would need, whatever structure, we would need some communication about what happened at different meetings so we could keep abreast.
I thought you had, it looked like you had something you were going-
I, I had some additional thoughts, certainly, but I, I know it's getting late tonight.
Go ahead.
And we have some additional, just, and I don't believe this is the intent, but as we move forward with, with whatever direction we decide to go in, I think as we formalize the program, it's the intent to increase communication, increase dialogue, the ability to workshop some of these ideas. I don't think it would go in this direction, but want to make sure that we're all on the same thinking process that every ordinance to be revised won't have to go through these committees. Because I don't think it's the intent to add the additional layers of, you know, kind of bureaucracy on that. Along those lines, and this is not a fully flushed-out thought, and I typically don't go public with those, but currently, you know, we, we use this committee of the whole process. Certainly, the state statute requires us to hear ordinances twice. The way we currently operate the committee of the whole meetings, we are really hearing them three times. We introduce them in concept, and then we hear them twice. So some of the dialogue on some of these ordinances, we go through multiple times. And there could be an avenue where, does this committee of the whole meeting see some repurposing? Or instead of doing a committee of the whole meeting, do, do we have smaller workshop type of, of dynamics? Maybe during the day, fleshing out policy in some, so just providing some, maybe it's not subcommittee, maybe there's a different mechanic for us to get there. Staff's certainly willing to support whatever that looks like, but-
And wasn't that the original idea was committee of the whole was to discuss policy?
It was, but I think we had heard feedback from staff that was not desired.
I would say, to Jamie's point, and talking earlier about kind of benchmarking and looking at what other, what other public bodies do, there's, a lot of places treat those as work sessions and do use them as a- Our committee of the whole has become something that is pretty structured and is often used to, as just a starting point for the ordinance process. But a work session sounds a lot like what the council is describing tonight, where it is, while we have to identify the items on the agenda, you can meet together and really talk about what you want, even though it's not fully formed. It might be a good place for you to have that communication and then let us use the, the regular meeting process as the, the way we move ordinances and resolutions through the council business.
Is it possible for us to look at the idea of utilizing it as a workshop, like every, like every third, every three months, instead of having this more formal setting, every three months having a workshop based on focusing on whatever policy is being worked on?
Whatever's come to the top.
Have a more informal, informal conversation. And then will, that'll still save us the opportunity to have these presentations at our committee of the whole. So it, then maybe that'll kind of, that experience will help kind of guide us into a different direction. I'm saying that every, like, third committee of the whole, if we did it as a workshop, where it's more-
Informal.
Informal.
So in a workshop, just to be clear, you're just saying like people could present a bunch of different policy ideas and stuff like that, or what?
We could have a workshop, yeah, where we could sit and discuss whatever it is we want to. Because I, I mean, everybody here has stuff they want to talk about, so I mean, that could present us an opportunity to do it in not such a rigid fashion and be like, and give updates on what is we're trying to do so that, because anything that we present, chances are, we could run through the policy relatively quickly in terms of all the stuff people want to see, but there's still gonna need to be work done to it. So if we did something like that every three months, it allows for, okay, so this is the idea I've been working on. Okay, well, these are the areas that we think could be better slash I could work with you on it. And then you can have a couple of months to go back, retool, recollect your thoughts, repurpose before making it, you know, before having to rush it.
Sure. That was my understanding of like how we wanted to change committee of the whole, and it was not desired by staff. So I-
Deputy Mayor.
Because it would cause like, there's issues that would be caused by, which we can discuss if you want.
I was just going to maybe add a little bit onto this discussion. You know, a lot of what we got today, you know, we talked a lot about the housing policy. So, you know, if the September committee of the whole would have been a present, you know, could have been a, a work session to hear potential housing policies for the first, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes, and then potentially a work session for council to focus specifically on ADUs. And maybe that's not drafting, you know, the language of an ADU ordinance, or, you know, whatever it may be. But getting that feedback and having that be specific, or, you know, even the hour prior to the council meeting, we essentially had a work session on the warming shelter. And so council is, is creating these opportunities, but doing so by essentially adding additional meetings onto that. And so if, if a work session is, whether that be monthly or quarterly, you know, there's, there's probably each month, it can be a topic that, you know, that way we can bring somebody else to the table, if that might be the Fairmont-Morgan Town Housing Authority, if we're talking about housing or some of the other groups, or if we want to talk about different development incentives or something like that. You know, then you could bring in the partnership, or, you know, we can pull together resources to be able to have information for council, but then also invite other people in. But just kind of fleshing through some of that could be an option.
And to certainly build on that, thank you, Emily. I think it's, it's productive for us if we can identify what those topics of the workshops are a little bit in advance so that we can invite people in. I think from a staff concern perspective is coming to a workshop and maybe not knowing what to, like, not knowing the topics in advance. And we certainly want to create a situation where the dynamic and the dialogue that we're prepared to provide any kind of support or information. So I think if we identified, hey, in two months, the topic of affordable housing is gonna be a work session. We want a fifteen-minute presentation. We want you to cover this. Here's who we want to engage. And then we're gonna, just like Emily said, that gives time for the staff to kind of prepare for that.
So if we were able to come up with a list every couple of months about the policy, we want to go over in a workshop. That's something that could be.
Yeah, if everyone took ideas for topics and just sent to the city manager, you can kind of arrange and prioritize them.
But I didn't hear what's-
So the problem was not expecting, there were topic areas that were not expected, then we wouldn't all be prepared.
Sorry, Lisa, I didn't use my fancy new microphone. Well, for us.
Correct. Given an opportunity to staff to be able to be prepared, to certainly ask any questions from a technical perspective.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. We have any further discussion on this, or are we ready to move on?
So what are we left with?
I have no idea.
So we're left with trying to use some of the-
A whole bunch of other ideas.
Trying to use, trying to use some of the time that we already have differently, which you all have already instituted.
Yeah.
And possibly making some working groups, which would make Danielle feel better about us not creating standing committees, because we're not supposed to.
So we're looking at retooling.
Working groups would be targeted, which Joe was concerned about.
Along those lines, if my, if I may ask you, we feel that there, based on tonight's conversation, that there would be benefit to establish a working group on affordable housing of a couple of council members.
Yeah, how do we even get more council? I mean, if you had two or three on, but other people wanted to rotate in, could we do some of that?
Just have to notice meetings, right?
Yes. All of those meetings will be public meetings. The committee will be established under Article 121. It can be established at any meeting of council. The mayor is a member by default and designates the chair. You could set multiple members of council and not all of you would need to attend, or other members of council who are not on the committee could attend because it's a public meeting.
Either way, I hope you guys want to-
Okay. Are we, are we good to move on?
Are you gonna feel satisfied?
I mean, no. This is, we got nothing accomplished, but that's all right.
What could be helpful for staff to bring back on this item?
What's that?
I said, is there anything that could be helpful for staff to bring back on this item?
I mean, it sounds like there's a bunch of things desired by council that could be brought back. So I, I'm not really sure where anybody's priorities are right now.
Everybody wants to get things done. Nobody wants to go to a whole bunch of extra meetings. People want to- People want to focus. Whatever you want to propose that keeps us focused, so we can get things done.
We have some proposals, but I guess we don't like any of these, but that's fine. But.
I think I would like to see ideas on how we could retool committee of the whole.
Same. I mean, and, and, and anything. I'd like to see anything. And, and any option, us walk away with any option for us to, you know, get more, get more business done.
How about we have a consent agenda? How about a consent agenda on the committee of the whole? So you have a bunch of items that we all know, we just want to move them forward, we read about them, we move them forward.
There's a bunch tonight that could have been.
Yeah, could have had a whole consent agenda, move those on and then spend the time on what is targeting.
There's no, there's no reason why we couldn't have one, right, Ryan?
And there's no requirement for us to bring the ordinances to committee of the whole to start with.
But we don't even, yeah, we don't even have to have them here. They would just appear.
That's set by the rules that we have set for ourselves that can be changed. It doesn't have to say, we'll generally begin at a committee of the whole, right?
But we have plenty of ordinances that don't come to the committee of the whole.
That's right.
But you could have a set so that everyone's aware of them nice and early, that was a consent agenda.
Well, I think, to, to your point, that would allow people to pull them off and discuss them if they wanted to as well.
Exactly.
Anything?
Oh, no. We're good. I was gonna, I was gonna answer that question, but I think I've forgotten what it was.
Can we do a consent agenda for the committee of the whole?
Yeah.
I, I mean, certainly you could. The committee of the whole is, you know, it's something under, nominally, it's something under Robert's rules. And the, the city of Morgantown uses it in a, in a particular way, that you're right, you've established by your council rules, but there's nothing, there's, you know, there's nothing legally required about that. You can, you can do as you would like with it, but certainly it seems like, do something that makes it, it work for you. If it's intended to be your opportunity to discuss ideas or, or discuss policy, then maybe a different format is, is better. And you, you have the option to do that. We could, it probably makes sense to update those rules to reflect that and talk about work sessions instead, if that's, if that's the route you go or, or whatever we do. But that's a, you know, that's a relatively simple action.
Or we can have items that we do, that we designate as very short, like, short description, keep me muzzled a little bit, short, short questions. And, you know, a certain number that we anticipate being five minutes each or three minutes each or something, and then, then go to the ones that we want.
Please move on.
Okay. Moving on to item I, ordinance establishing the Morgantown Mosaic Neighborhood Pride and Engagement Initiative. Jamie, would you?
I will defer to Councilor Downs to start the presentation of this item and then certainly happy to add any items that he'd like me to address.
And, and thank you. So I'm happy to be bringing this proposed ordinance to, to, in front of committee of the whole and quite proud that this is the first piece of policy that I've participated in, in, in drafting. I will say that, that Counselor Hollingshead is, whilst he's not here, is, is, has been active in working on this with me, as most of you have, well, all of you have. I think to the point of the last discussion, and I'm killing time because my computer's waking up. But, but anyway, to the point of the last discussion, I very intentionally attempted to, you know, I wanted to be inclusive, I wanted to be sure to reach out and give everybody the opportunity to engage with this before it, before it came forward to committee of the whole. So the idea here with Morgantown Mosaic is that our community is, is obviously, is, is obviously a mosaic and community starts at home and, and, and with our neighborhoods. So this is an opportunity for the city, this program is an opportunity for the city to engage with our community and with our neighborhoods as a force multiplier. The, the program establishes a 50% match for, for, for neighborhood initiatives that are qualifying neighborhood initiatives. It's modeled on successful programs like in Seattle, Cleveland, San Antonio, and many other places around the country. The idea is built, is, is quite clear. We build stronger connections between our residents when we have projects for our residents to engage in, to, that, that are important to them. And what's most important to us is the, is, is, is the areas that we live in and, and, and those opportunities to, you know, to engage, to reduce blight, improve perceptions, create visible immediate wins, to, to have an impact on, on our neighborhoods. I've seen firsthand the, the power of, of, of these projects and, and sat in a, a ton of neighborhood meetings and listened for, listened to, you know, the history of why some neighborhoods are really successful, some neighborhoods associations are really successful, and, and why some are not. And, and some that are not were reflecting and, and, and talking about when they were. And to me, it all came down to, you know, things, rallying cries and things to, things to go and do together, and really projects. And I think if we, I believe if we give our neighborhood association, associations a toolset like this, we're gonna see more engagement. We're gonna see more engagement in our neighborhoods, we're gonna see more, more pride in our community. And, and, and so, so that's, that's really the idea behind it. The ordinance is, is pretty general. It, it is supported by a program guide that is more specific in terms of the implementation. That was a, that was a, a great put from, in, a piece of input from, to the process from staff. Staff is, is correct, I believe, to have, to, to have recommended that approach and drafted the program guide. It, it gives more flexibility for, 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 for the, the program to evolve and change without, you know, having to go through, having to go through the policymaking process per se. So to that end, programs can, can qualify in a number of different areas. The, the intent is for the neighborhood communicating, neighborhood coordinating council to, to serve as kind of the, the, as the, the board that evaluates projects annually and, and make, makes recommendations, scores those, score those, scores those projects, make, makes recommendations. Staff will engage to, to provide input to those projects in terms of whether they run afoul of any part of city code or create, create some kind of hardship for, for, for anyone. So, but, but, you know, to, to the point about community, the, the neighborhood, the, giving that, the neighborhood coordinating council, the, the, the ability to engage in this creates, again, I think, more grassroots kind of engagement with, in terms of the community and in terms of their ability. I think there's power behind a peer, peer-reviewed board, you know, to, and, and certainly it affords the opportunity for, you know, like, oh, that was a great idea, and kind of the, the, the building of best practice within, within, within that. And we had success with this project and this one, you know, so that kind of collaboration, I think, is something that is, could be fostered. So Jamie, do you have anything else to offer?
Certainly, just a couple of notes. Thank you, counselor. I appreciated the, the back and forth dialogue with, with the staff. I think it was a very productive discussion and allowing staff the opportunity when, when we receive the policy direction in, in concept to flush through. You know, we get into the nitty gritty sometimes, but that's our role, is to kind of grind down and say practically, what are the things we gotta move forward? So kudos to staff to, to pull together with the counselor and, and say, what, what could this look like? And we've received some feedback on that program guide that will incorporate some, some great feedback as well. So that is just a draft version that is in your packet, and we will continue to modify that as we see best practice move forward. Certainly, anytime we're instituting a, a new program that has potential for funding need to be associated with it, that's something that will be a dialogue with council as we go through our budget process. So as we put this program on the books currently in this year, there, there's no funding allocated, so we would be setting ourselves up for allocating funding in future years. So as we look to the vision of how this program is right now intended to be implemented, is staff would like to recommend that we go into a process similar to our, our outside agencies that request funding from the city, is, there's a period in, now, this about, this time of year where the outside agencies put funding requests in, there's a period of review, it comes forward and it's ranked, and then a list is established and considered as we adopt the budget. We do recognize that as we adopt this, that window would be too short this year. So one of the things I wanted to note is, is we likely would establish a funding amount that we would put towards this program this year and go through that ranking process after the budget. So the first year, the first year of the pilot program, I think we'd see it go a little bit different than what staff would envision the program looks like in, in future years, where we'd like to get that ranked list before we develop the budget this year. Going forward, we would see that in reverse.
I would actually probably prefer it to be that way moving forward. It's one thing for the city and staff to be planning that far ahead for, you know, what we're gonna spend money on in the next fiscal year, but I think asking volunteers and residents to say like, by December, you have to know what kind of funds stuff you want to do next October, I think that's probably unreasonable. I would like to see us say, set aside $20,000 or whatever that, that, um, chum, yeah, whatever it is. The amount, thank you. I gotta go home. Whatever that amount is, and then maybe have an initial period in the spring of submissions and if there's money left over, if it wasn't all used in the summer, we do another, but...
Mark, is this for the whole city, Chris?
Absolutely.
Trail?
Absolutely.
Well, no, it's just for the neighborhoods.
It's for the whole city, every, every, so, thanks for the question. Yeah, every, every, every qualifying neighborhood in, in the city and the, yeah, the, the list is participating neighborhoods in the neighborhood coordinating council as, as it stands.
And would staff, I would like to see staff, like, just do an initial filtering of looking at them, maybe not even necessarily screening out unless it was really blatant, and then go to the neighborhood, just so that staff was familiar with what, or make comments, and then give it over to the, but just, it would be good if people were aware, just if something needed engineering or if something was some kind of initial, or, or you could have them go through the neighborhood coordinating council first and then toward implementation. Just, I would just, somewhere in there have staff just look it over.
Yeah, and that, that was, the idea was the, the ladder, what you said, so that it goes through the coordinating council, then, then to staff and then, you know, back to, right, right. And then if there are problems, staff's gonna come back to coordinating council and say, hey, this is, well, this is a great idea.
Anything like that.
It creates these hardships and, or issues that, and, and perhaps it gets reconsidered.
And I, and I made notes, kind of like what you were saying, that neighborhoods work more quickly. I mean, they would like to see a turnaround more quickly, so if it was annually and then if it was even, if there were funds left over, if it was even like two times, a second time in the year, just so that we get from idea to actual implementation a little bit quicker.
Yeah. And, and, I mean, really, it just draws on, like I said, the enthusiasm that, that, that I've seen in, in neighborhoods that are thriving and, and, and reflecting on neighborhoods that used to be thriving and, and now not necessarily are and why. They, I mean, I sat there and listened to them say, well, we had these projects and they were really cool and everybody was excited about them. And if you look at the work, the work that, I mean, we, the volunteers that have turned out to pick up, pick up, pick up litter and, and, and the cleanup projects that we use and Danielle participate in, these are things that, you know, people have enthusiasm for, so let's give them a toolset.
So I wanted you to bravely let the coordinating council have one look at it, and then, and then, and then we can implement it really soon after that. But I think if we want them to be the ones that are implementing it, I think they should have like one look at it.
What's the next coordinating council?
And I don't think that's a very...
Third Monday, 13th. Second Monday of October.
And, and, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I've talked to a number of members of the coordinating council.
I think that would help them to feel attached to it when, when we're asking them to give out the money. Tough role.
And I think we can do that in parallel. I mean, you know, we can do that in parallel with...
You may want to email that out because that date is a holiday, so our offices will be closed and staff will not be working.
Is it the Tuesday?
It's normally on a Monday evening.
The, the last thing, you know, that I'll, I'll say about it, unless there are other, any other questions that come up specifically for me, but, but I do, I do appreciate the, I do appreciate that, that you all, you know, I sent this individually to, to each of you. I appreciate your responses and the engagement from all of you, your, your participation, staff's participation made this better as we work through it iteratively to get to this point. So, thank you.
Could it go toward a neighborhood sign, if somebody wanted to enhance their neighborhood sign past the amount of money?
The, yeah, and that's, go ahead, Jamie.
We envisioned that that program would fold and fold under this because it's outlined. It would fit nicely into being able to do some signage for the neighborhood would fold under this program.
And just look at the success of the neighborhood signage program, right?
Well, that, that, I mean, there is a lot of enthusiasm. We just have a lot of, like, Suncrest Neighborhood Signs, like, there's a lot of different parts.
Right now, you can buy dinosaurs online.
Say that again?
Dinosaurs. Dinosaurs. Yeah, there's this like dinosaur park that is closing down. For $2,000, you can get T-Rex. I think it would make, I think it'd make my neighborhood look tip-top. I'm already filling out my application.
The program guide, does that take an act of council to amend, or is that administrative?
Typically, program guides are administratively managed.
And in this ordinance, the city manager is empowered to adopt those rules and regulations and then to maintain them.
Maybe we could have a working group talk to you.
They're not likely to change it if you don't, they're not likely to change it if you don't want them to.
Yeah. No, I, I think that's...
We could always bring it to council if there was an issue.
I honestly think that's, no, I think it's better.
Quicker.
Yeah, you can be more nimble with it.
Do you have strongly booking pride in the name?
No.
I've been looking at synonyms for pride, and there are not very many good ones. I was trying to find another word. That's kind of the word for that feeling.
Neighborhood.
That's probably why it's being used by many people.
Everyone come, everyone come to the first reading with your best synonym.
Substitution for pride.
I, I've been, I've been sitting here looking at them.
The best Scrabble words for, for pride.
Move to an agenda?
Yeah.
Agreed.
Do it.
I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Second.
Two seconds in? Pretty good to get that done by 10:30.